We call this meeting of the Santa Barbara City Council to order. Today's June 4, 2019. We're going to start with our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Here.
Councilmember Ross.
Here.
Councilmembers Sin.
Here.
Mayor Maria.
Here.
Mayor Potem Friedman.
Here.
Councilmember Harmon.
Here.
And Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Thank you. So we have a ceremonial item. Would you read number one, please?
Yes. Item one, National Gun Violence Awareness Days, June 7 through 9, 2019.
Someone here to receive this? There. Yay! Good to see you.
Thank you.
So, this is a proclamation acknowledging National Gun Violence Awareness Days, June 7 through June 9, 2019. Whereas the Santa Barbara Coalition Against Gun Violence currently celebrating its 25th anniversary joins a national coalition of organizations recognizing June 7 through the 9 as National Gun Violence Awareness Days to honor all victims and survivors of gun violence. And whereas because an average of 97 Americans die daily from shootings and countless people are injured by guns every day, it is past time for Americans to declare that we, as a nation, must do more to reduce gun violence. And whereas to honor Hadia Pendleton, a teen whose birthday was June 2, who was tragically shot and killed weeks after marching in President Obama's second inaugural parade, friends of Hadia asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange to symbolize the value of human life, choosing orange because hunters wear it to announce themselves to other hunters. And whereas the communities of Isla Vista, Santa Barbara, and communities nationwide continue to grieve from the mass shooting in Isla Vista five years ago on May 23, 2014, that killed six people and injured 13 others. And whereas gun violence is not only a major public health and safety issue costing the nation tens of thousands of lives and countless injuries annually, but also a financial burden that costs the nation an estimated $100 to $126 billion. Now therefore, I, Mayor Kathy Mario, do hereby proclaim June 7 through the 9, 2019, as National Gun Violence Awareness Days. I encourage everyone to wear orange in honor and remembrance of gun violence victims and to support local efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence. Thank you, former Congresswoman Lois Capps, for being here.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, City Councilmembers, for this proclamation and the words that you shared that are on it. It's a privilege to be a part of the large coalition against gun violence that this community is home to, and to thank the city for standing up to gun violence. And I was honored to represent this part of South County in Congress five years ago when the tragedy occurred in Isla Vista. And it's interesting to me, five years later, that our neighboring community of Isla Vista has decided, as they honored that memory of five years ago, to turn it into a celebration of what they call the beloved community. They want to make that a tribute and are developing ways to do that. I'm also mindful of the op-ed that was written in our local papers by our Congressman Salud Carvajal and Senator Dianne Feinstein. And they are part of reintroducing legislation that I first initiated called "A Pause for Safety." And you may have seen some things about this in the news as we prepare for this week of honoring and dedicating ourselves as a nation. The opportunity also, I believe, is going to be before you by one of my colleagues, Jackie Inda, to proclaim and ask for attention to the gun buyback, which will occur at Earl Warren Showground on June 15, which is a national or a local yearly occurrence as well. So this means a great deal to all of us on your behalf. Thank you.
Thank you so much.[337.00][337.00](APPLAUSE). Item number two, please, under ceremonial items.
Item two, Employee Recognition Service Award Pins.
Mr. Casey?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. As you know, each month I like to recognize city employees for achieving a certain milestone in their service with the city. So I'd like to read some names into the record today. There are no employees receiving their pin in person today. With five years of service to the city, Justin Van Mullum, project planner, Parks and Recreation Department. With 15 years of service to the city, Russ Douglas, senior electrician, communications technician, Public Works Department. And Donald Jehotamy, male service specialist with the Finance Department. With 20 years of service to the city, Jim Austin, Fire Inspector III with the Fire Department. And with 25 years of service to the city, Nick Kabugos, Street Maintenance Coordinator, Public Works Department. And Gary Horwald, Fleet Services Manager, Public Works Department.
Very good. We congratulate and thank those employees. And sorry, no one's here to take their pin. We'll catch them next time. We'll catch them in the next 20 years. So we'll close our ceremonial items. Mr. Casey, are there any changes to our agenda today?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. We'll go to public comment. This is our opportunity to hear from the public on items that are not on our agenda. Scott Wentz, you're going to be first. You'll get three minutes at the mic. There's a timer there. Keep your eye on that. And Holly Pareja is in the back of the room if you need to make an appointment with any of us or if you have questions for staff. We can't really get into conversations or decision-making because these are items not on the agenda. Mr. Wentz, welcome.
Good afternoon, Scott Wentz, representing Cars Are Basic. With some chagrin, we noticed that the city's going ahead with its mid-block bulbout program on Figueroa Street. It's uncalled for. You don't have statistics proving it, but that's nothing new for the city's Transportation Department. We ask for justification for the Victoria, not Victoria, excuse me, Voluntario Street bulbout program on the east side. The request was made by Councilman Ross to your city administrator. The city administrator had a response, and the response says, "We feel this will help." You have a four-way stop at that location. Four-way stop. So how are you going to build $45,000 bulbouts to make pedestrians safer when you have a four-way stop? But then it suddenly dawned on me, part of the problem you have is that majority who probably went to school in California, in California, at least since the '60s, has been heavily socialist-influenced, particularly in politics and economics. And so I figure, you know what? Maybe you need a little bit more education. I have three degrees. I'm a research scientist. I also took three years of economics from Austrian School of Capitalism. So I thought I'd bring in to you a small book called "The Anticapitalist Mentality" by Von Mises, a giant in the field of economics from the Austrian School. I encourage you to read it. Because if you continue wasting taxpayer money for street projects that aren't needed, then you're stealing from the taxpayer. And I don't think any of you think yourselves as thieves. So, you know, you have something to think about. Here are your books. There'll be a test next month.
Madam Clerk, if you'll take those. Thanks. Phil Walker, you're next. You'll be followed by David Blue Wolf Diaz, Craig Rice, Frank Ochoa. Come on up, Mr. Walker.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. My wife's family, my wife Terry's family home was severely flooded March 10, 1995, when Sycamore Creek overtopped its banks. The county flood control did an excellent job in the passing years with cleaning out the drainage, widening it, deepening it down, and putting the guard to the bridge is great. But, you know, here's the rule of unintended consequences on steroids. They planted, I talked to a county flood control specialist, they planted sand willows for environmental mitigation after the banks were all scraped and cleaned out. And they're going berserco like on steroids. It's unbelievable. And, you know, all the neighbors see it. And I actually, the lady at county flood control, had a projection of four by six on the wall that could show over the intervening years since it was originally cleaned out and the growth of the sand willows, what has happened. And it's just amazing. Okay, the Quinientos Street Bridge is well underway, you know, LASH is working diligently on it. But they are de-watering that area for probably installing port-in-place, port-informed place pilings or caissons or something. So now there's a constant water flow down the Sycamore Creek drainage, which is adding to the problem because, you know, the willows have more water than they can even vapor transpire. So, you know, one problem exacerbates another, and you're not even aware you're creating it. So I understand county flood control is communicating with the city's Creeks Division about the concerns. So it is a concern, excuse me. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Mr. Diaz. Mr. Rice, after you. Judge Ochoa, after him. Christina Flores, after them. Thanks.
Good morning, Santa Barbara. How are we doing today? I'm a native tribal cultural expert when there's fires, and I go to the command centers. I've had many issues with the U.S. Forest Service, and we're working through the pragmatics. But during the Thomas fire, I was at the end of Ventura Avenue at David Poo, a local Santa Barbara Goledean who now lives in Ventura. He's one of the world's best serving photographers. After helping him evacuate, the next morning I had a call with the tribal liaison Pete Crowhart with the Los Padres National Forest. And during our discussions, he's going, "I'm probably going to be needing you down here." I'm going, "Well, that's okay. I'm just a few miles down the road. I can ride my bike." And I went on in to the command center at the fairgrounds, and as a result, I went to the morning briefing. And when I left a little bit later, I ran into John Smith. He likes to go by the name of Poncho. He's the district ranger for the Los Padres National Forest District. And we were discussing some of the issues about the Wheeler fire and some of the discrimination issues that us Native Americans experience while dealing with archeology. And I asked him if they're going to try and stop the fire, the backfires, before they get past Carpinteria. He goes, "Oh, no, we're going to let that area burn because it hadn't burned in several years." And I was going, oh, I didn't know if I said "help," "hoop," or "heck," but I said, "Oh, it's all going to break out." And sure enough, my cousin Marcus Lopez of Montecito lost six people in eight houses. And so I finished concluding my little report with a major portion of what I documented, and I was discussing the issue with the mayor the other week in front of the county building with guards because she was going to an air pollution meeting. And she found it difficult to believe and said it wasn't true. So now here is the truth, and it's documented and signed. And that really shifts a lot of the responsibility around because they're not listening to some of the best experts, us native cultural experts who are considered to be number four or six sciences that make up the national forest across the country, according to the U.S. government. So I'll give this over here to the gentleman, and he can make copies and the public if you want it. You know where it's at.
To the Clerk, care please.
Have a good day. Hi. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Diaz.
Have a good day, Santa Barbara. Be good.
Is that you, Mr. Rice? Come on up.
Good afternoon. Before my time starts, Ms. Mayor, I'd love to present printed packets. I believe they've all been emailed, all members of the council have been emailed with this information. It includes information about what myself and Judge Ochoa and a number of other members of the community.
Can you put your microphone higher?
I'm sorry about that.
Better, much better. You ready?
Printed packets, yes. Hi, I'm Craig Rice, and I am an attorney, and I work with Santa Barbara Immigration Lawyers, Inc., in Santa Barbara. In July of 2018, I had the pleasure to meet Juana Flores and her husband Andres Flores. I came to my office with Ron Burns, Dave Grotenhaus, and Wayne Siemens, who've all been very active, as I understand it, in local and regional politics. Recently, Donald Trump has proposed merit-based immigration reform, or at least brought it back into the spotlight. He's mentioned this before, but now it's here again. Sort of abandoning family values, which strangely enough is something that his party claims to be one of their main focal points. There are about 11,800 U.S. military service members who have an undocumented family member, including a spouse, a parent, maybe. So we're not talking about bad hombres here. We're talking about military families. And our service members shouldn't have to go to work every day prepared to defend our freedom while ICE is prepared to deport their mom or dad, particularly in cases where there are no criminal convictions and there are no egregious sort of offenses. On the other hand, we should want our service members to be calm and ready to do their job for our country. There are a number of stories throughout the country, including a retired directive of military intelligence who will move to Korea because the U.S. will not allow his 17-year-old adopted daughter to remain in the U.S. These cases are all going to be in your printed packets, by the way. In April of 2019, ICE deported Jose Gonzalez Carranza, whose wife served in the U.S. Army and died in combat in Afghanistan in 2010, leaving their 12-year-old daughter without either parent. Now fortunately, the public outcry said, "This isn't right," and ICE allowed him to come back to parent his 12-year-old U.S. citizen daughter. In August of 2018, ICE deported Alejandra Juarez, wife of a decorated U.S. Marine veteran. Their 16-year-old U.S. citizen daughter stayed in Florida with dad, while their nine-year-old U.S. citizen daughter had to go back to Mexico with mom, splitting up the family. Again, we're missing family values. Salud Carvajal, Representative Carvajal has introduced legislation, H.R. 1871, which I know that the council's familiar with, or I understand that some of you are at least. And that would be the Protect Patriot Parents Act. That would be to support these parents of service members. Representative Darren Soda in Florida has introduced a bill called Protect Patriot Spouses Act, which will do the same. So we're here today to ask you to look at a local case about Juana Maria Flores, who is affected directly by this. She's been deported by ICE in April, and we ask you to consider this seriously.
Thanks. Mr. Rice, if you would make an appointment with Holly Pareja, and we can discuss how the council would respond to this.
Thank you.
Thanks. Judge Ochoa, come on up. And I will stop taking slips for open public comment right now. Anybody wants to talk after that? We have a public comment at the end of the meeting. Judge Ochoa, welcome.
Thank you, Honorable Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm representing Juana Flores on a pro bono basis. I became involved in this case last summer when she was subject to deportation, had been allowed to stay in the country until her military son was married at the courthouse. We were able to obtain several extensions after that. Her original order for deportation had been entered in 2015, and the Obama administration had developed a parole-in-place policy, which basically let family members alone when they had military ties and didn't present any problem or not, a drain on any public resource, had no convictions, had been here a long time, as had Ms. Flores for 30 years. That changed in February of this year when ICE determined that they were going to deport this mother of 10 children, grandmother of 15 children residing in Goleda. She's the trunk of this tree, the foundation of this family, and there is no detriment to her being here to anyone, and a lot of benefits. She's an important part of her community, her extended family, has people who work at Cottage Hospital. Andres works in the city of Santa Barbara. Mr. Burns may talk about that. But something has to be said, this kind of family separation that we've heard about and many people have decried, when children are separated from their parents at the border, has many other ramifications, and this is one of them. And it's happening to a member of a family who are residents here, constituents of yours, that cry out for assistance in this regard. We've developed resolutions. Our hope is that you will, of course, support H.R. 1871 and the companion bill. We've asked presidential candidates to review materials and take a stand on this issue. But we'd also ask you to request that ICE take another look at Ms. Flores's case. Their decision to deport was an exercise in discretion. I did that many thousands of times on the bench, as have you in your arena. They had the discretion to change that decision. I would say that there was an abuse of discretion, and the result was a cruelty to many people, and that needs to be remedied, and you can help in that regard.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
If you would sit in on the meeting, I'd be grateful.
Thank you.
Thanks. Christina Flores, you're next. Ron Burns, after you. George Esken. Anna Marie Gott. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. I am one of the 10 children of Juana Flores. So I'm here to... This is really hard, having my mom not here with us. You know, she is a wonderful mother, taxpayer, homeowner. I'm an educator. My sisters are nurses here, and we can't believe that she's gone, that they've taken her away from us. You know, she came to this country for a better future for us, for them, for my parents, for everyone here. And all she got was for her to, you know, be taken away from us, and it's not fair. She is a valuable asset to our family because she provides assistance to my brother Oscar, who has schizophrenia, and my father, who is diabetic. So we really need her here, and we miss her very much. We love her, and we miss her. And we ask you to please vote yes on H.R. 1871. And again, please help and to bring her back because she's a valuable asset to our community. And she's not a threat to society. She's not taking anyone's job. She's here to be with us, to provide a better future and to just keep us together. And she has been. We still go to church as a family together, and thanks to my mom and my dad because they brought us those values and those principles. So we ask you to please help us vote on this bill. And also, just wanted to also point out that my brother's in the Air Force, and this is stress for him, and we don't want that. We want him to serve this country because it's a good country, and I think that he's there to fight for everyone, for all of us. And it's not fair that my mom was taken away for a simple thing as, I don't know, the fact that she went to go see my grandmother, who was dying, and that was her only fault here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Burns. And Judge Esken, after you. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Ron Burns. I'm here to support Juana Flores, her family. I'm so sorry that Christina and all of her family are going through this horrible tragedy. The Pledge of Allegiance, the last line, "Liberty and justice for all." That's what this is all about. It's about liberty. It's about justice, about compassion, humanity, and judging an individual accordingly. Juana Flores, a good lady. You've heard everyone speak that way about her, a great mother and grandmother, living here for 30 years. She's not a rapist. She's not a criminal. She's not a bad hombre. She's a mother with 10 children, 15 grandchildren. She takes daily care of her schizophrenic son, a husband with diabetes, as you've heard. ICE is a very forceful operation today. It's focused on numbers. It's not focused on humanity, and it's just following orders. Thousands of other military families are facing similar stress, the kind of separation that's happening Craig spoke about. It's happening here. It's happening in Texas. It's happening in Florida. I suspect it's happening all across America right now. In the end, ICE has deported a mother of Carlos, an Air Force senior airman. Sent her to Aguascalente, while they very well could send him to Afghanistan to fight for our freedom. We need this resolution to carry on our fight to bring Juana home and help the thousands of other service people in this country. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Judge Esken? You'll be followed by Anna Marie Gott, Nancy Belko, Daniella, Laura Garcia Diaz, and the final speaker will be Lorna Boyd.
Mayor Mario and members of the council, I'm here in my dual capacity as a 45-year resident of the city of Santa Barbara and a grandfather. And I was inspired to come today because this morning on NPR, I heard a report of the latest atrocity and revelations of the mistreatment of children at the border. And one of the commentators made the observation that every day there's something new that's revealed that's causing us to be numb to the various craziness that is occurring. And there was a fear expressed that the numbness will cause us to accept a new normal and not respond to the injustice that's occurring. And so I thought to myself, well, we can't be numb, and numb to the extent that we can accept what happened to the Flores family. As I stand here, I feel I'm not here speaking on behalf of or in support of Juana Flores. I'm speaking on behalf of, even though they haven't asked me, her family, residents of our community, her daughter, her children, her grandchildren. They're the ones who are suffering, just like the children in the pens and cages at the border are suffering. And we have a responsibility, you as elected officials, I as a private citizen, to speak up and speak out and to support the legislation that Congressman Carvajal has introduced, 1871, to speak out, to call out to ICE to reconsider its decision to send Grandma to Mexico. And so in the spirit of liberty and justice for all, the pledge that you articulated, we all articulated at the commencement of these proceedings, I urge you to embrace the request of Judge Ochoa and Craig Rice and do whatever you can to speak out against this injustice and to restore to the Flores family their grandmother, the Flores family, our neighbors, and it's the least we can do. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Scott?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Dominguez.
I just want to point out the Legislative Committee, which is Councilmembers Harmon and Friedman and I met recently to talk about our legislative platform, and it's coming to council. So I think this H.R. 1871 is something we can address when it comes back to us. And I think, do you know, two weeks. So hopefully, we can address that and bring resolution. The story touches all of us. I can tell by the quiet in the room. My great-grandfather is from Aguascalientes, which is very near where the Flores family's from. So I really, I can picture where she is sitting now, watching from thousands of miles away.
Okay. That's, okay, that's a great suggestion. Go ahead, Ms. Scott.
Half-naked, pipe-wielding man standing in the middle of Chapala. That's the phone call I received last night from a friend who came to Santa Barbara for a few days. a few days. It's kind of interesting, you know, seven cops actually showed up after the phone call. He was standing in the middle of the street. He created a lot of attention. He was homeless, drunk, mentally ill, not really sure, maybe on drugs. That's the same location where on May the 15th, a home had a bullet shot through it because a homeless man shot at another one. And my friend was staying in that home, one block off State Street, on the 400 block. So, you know, we were told a few weeks ago that we don't have a homeless problem, and we're exaggerating it. So we have a homeless problem that is out of control, and we have problems that are getting worse. I told my friend that when she gets home and she calms down, that I would help her go ahead and write a letter to the editor and throw it in her local newspaper, or maybe this LA Times or something. Because people need to understand that Santa Barbara has really changed. It's changed for the worse. And it is your responsibility to help fix the problems. But you're not doing anything that I can really see. There's nothing really that you've done that is really helping the problem. And it's really sad because the Santa Barbara that everyone grew up with and loved is really disappearing. We have basically an encampment that is circling the blocks around Gutierrez. There's seven or eight of them with all of their stuff, circling the blocks. They move every few days. I have a friend who wanders around Milpus Street, and he sees homeless defecate, urinate. There's been people that have come and testified that they're seeing them have sex in the middle of our renovated baseball field and on the streets of Milpus. And it's not how it's supposed to be. But we don't see that it's actually getting better by any policy, by any decision, or any report that you guys have actually done and heard here at City Council. So what are you really going to do? Pass the buck, kind of like what you've done with the A U D? I don't know.
Ms. Coe? Come on up, please. Welcome.
Thank you so much for this time. I want to, I met Juana Flores 15 years ago when I moved to Santa Barbara. I've known her and her family for this entire time. And in my opinion, no matter what criteria you're using for immigration for our country, whether it's family or merit-based, Juana has absolutely earned the right to be here with her family. And I thank you so much for considering how you might support this effort on behalf of Juana and her family and so many others. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Daniela? Come on up. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Daniela. I'm here on behalf of Jacquelineinda, representing Coalition Against Gun Violence. And I just wanted to inform you guys about our annual gun buyback and thank the city because the leadership of Santa Barbara has really made the gun buybacks possible. And although we, every year, it's harder to get more money because so many people are being informed about the gun buyback and thus more people from out of town are coming and trading in their firearms, we still make it possible for people to trade them in. And like I said, we're having another one on June 15th, and we're gonna be, it's gonna be held at the Earl Warren Showgrounds. And we would like to let you know that it's from 8:00 a.m. till noon, and we will be running out of gift cards like we do every year. So please help us promote this event so that people can show up early before the gift cards run out. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for that work.
Hi. My name is Laura Garcia Diaz. I am here as a member of Santa Barbara Response Network Immigration Advocacy Collaborative. I lead the coordination of the services of New York Rights Workshops and trainings for this migrant community in collaboration with the Mexican consulate. I am here to inform you that our Immigration Advocacy Collaborative has met informally with many of you council members to talk about a passing resolution in support of migrant rights as well as H R 1871, and place this combined resolution on your agenda for further discussion in the near future. The Immigration Advocacy Collaborative is here to help you in crafting this very important resolution. The opportunity is now. Thank you very much for your continued support for the Latino community that is part of the city.
All right. Thank you. Final speaker, Lorna Boyd. Can you hear Ms. Boyd? There.
I am indeed. Thank you, City Council. I was here a couple of weeks ago to discuss with you or to actually make you aware of the things that I'm seeing on the Milpus Avenue as I flew to and from my home. Also, I also walk through Chase Palm Park on a regular basis and all through the community. On my 2.5-mile walk to get here today, I just took note of this. I encountered 18-plus homeless individuals who were either panhandling, harassing, or obscuring the flow of traffic. Okay? Three were urinating and/or defecating. Chase Palm Park is devoid of families often as I walk through. Anyone is greeted, to use the term loosely, by a group of homeless residents. This is on a continual basis. I heard you, Mayor, tell us that Jason Dominguez was exaggerating the problem in Ortega Park. I invite you, and I challenge you, to walk with me one day throughout our community and see what we see. See how we live. I don't know where you're walking, where you don't encounter this, and where you think it's not as big of a problem as it is. But it is, and it's getting worse. I am, and Trader Joe's the other day on Milpus Street. I was there buying some fruit, and there was a woman who came through and took, you know, a handful of blueberries out of each package and then reclosed it. You know, she had filthy hands. She was, you know, a person who was intoxicated and obviously a street person. I myself am immunodeficient. You know, I had cancer a number of years ago, and I can catch an illness from someone doing that. In fact, I did. Earlier this year, I had C. diff, which is life-threatening. I don't know that I encountered it there, but I could have, and it certainly is on most of the homeless population. They have diseases and illnesses that we will find to be catastrophic, as they are in Los Angeles, if we don't take the opportunity to deal with these problems. It is now in your hands to look at and evaluate the programs that we heard so much about two weeks ago that I can't see any benefit from. I do walk up and down State Street, and yes, it is minimized there, but that we don't live there. And I understand that we're a tourist community, but I'm a native Santa Barbara, and I deserve, as does my family, as does everyone here, to be able to walk the streets unencumbered by someone coming up to us, harassing us, potentially giving us an illness or something else. And I am a proponent and care deeply about people who have homeless problems and situations. I know, I was a development director at Costa Esperanza for a while. I understand it. But the measures that you are taking are not working, and you have to reanalyze and look at it again.
Thanks for your comments.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And I challenge you again.
Okay. Public comment is done, and we're moving on to the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, are there items to read, please?
Yes. Excuse me. Item three, introduction of ordinance to grant utility easement to Southern California Edison for the Metropolitan Transit District Transit Center. Recommendation that council introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara authorizing the conveyance of a public utility easement to Southern California Edison at surface parking lot three for Santa Barbara Metropolitan Transit District Transit Center. Item four, Ranteria Apartments Loan Restatement and Subordination Request. Recommendation that council introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving a restated loan agreement, restated deed of trust, and new 90-year affordability control covenant with Mariana Ranch LP and authorizing the community development director to execute such agreements as necessary. Item five, adoption of ordinance for access improvements for Spanish speakers. Recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, amending ordinance number 5865, 2018-2020, memorandum of understanding with the General Bargaining Unit to include pay for participation on the Spanish-language cadre. And item six, bequest from Nancy Gifford to the City of Santa Barbara Public Library. Recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara accepting a donation of art from Nancy Gifford in the appraised value of $257,520 for the exclusive use and benefit of the Santa Barbara Public Library. And item seven, Parking and Business Improvement Area Annual Assessment Report for fiscal year 2020, intention to levy. Recommendation that council, A, approve the Parking and Business Improvement Area Annual Report 2020, and B, adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara declaring council's intention to levy Parking and Business Improvement Area Assessment Rates for fiscal year 2020 at public hearing to be held on June 18, 2019 at 2:00 p.m.
Would you also read item 11 and 15, please?
Yes. Item 11, Approval of Contract to Provide Traffic Engineering Services for Cliff Drive Intersections. And item 15, Contract for Construction of Highway Safety Improvement Program Pedestrian Crossing Enhancements Project.
Mr. Rouse, do you need to recuse yourself from item seven?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I am a PBI paid member, so I will be abstaining from that vote.
Can I have a motion for seven, please?
I'll move item seven.
That was Friedman, Sneddon, all in favor. I...
Abstain.
And, okay, very good. Thank you. So we've had a request from the public to pull number 11. Terry Jory would like to speak on that, and Luz Reyes Martin. Dr. Jory, you come on up first and to remind the public that was approval of contract to provide traffic engineering services for Cliff Drive intersections. You have three minutes, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, City Council members, and Mr. Casey. I'm Dr. Terry Jory, president of our Mesa Neighborhood, a very active grassroots organization on the mesa. Safety on Cliff Drive is the number-one issue on the mesa for our community. Cliff Drive is the mesa's major thoroughfare with three elementary schools, City College, and a thriving business district. All types of people use mixed modes of transportation on Cliff Drive, competing for space. Cars, bicycles, and pedestrians are all trying to get across Cliff Drive, trying to get to their destination safely. Unfortunately, countless accidents occur. Regrettably, my daughter witnessed a horrific accident while she was on Cliff Drive a couple weekends ago during Memorial Weekend involving a motorcycle and a car. Too many people in the mesa witness accidents on Cliff Drive, and we need to fix Cliff Drive and make it safer. The goal for all our residents on the mesa is for us to feel comfortable walking our children and our pets on Cliff Drive, having safe routes to school, knowing we can cross the street, cross Cliff Drive without being harmed. Our priority, first and foremost, is to have two crosswalks, one on the west and one on the east side of Cliff Drive. Omni, in collaboration with the Mesa Business Association, has been raising funds for the last four years specifically for crosswalks on Cliff Drive. We hold what's called Mesa Music Nights at Ellings Park. It's a free family event of music and fun, and we've raised so far $20,000. So we are really committed for these crosswalks. We wholeheartedly support the Public Works proposed study for better traffic flow for the three Cliff Drive intersections. However, we're not convinced that a roundabout, continuous traffic flow is the best solution in a heavily trafficked pedestrian area with students from City College as well as McKinley Elementary School going to and fro is the solution. We do believe in data, and we will wait to hear what the data has to say.
Thank you. Right at three minutes. Ms. Reyes Martin, come on up.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Murillo and members of the City Council. My name's Luz Reyes Martin. I'm Executive Director of Public Affairs and Communications at Santa Barbara City College. And I'm here just to express the college's appreciation that the city staff and the council will consider this type of study to look at traffic improvements that will promote safety. We tragically had a fatality right in front of our college about six months ago that was really horrific and traumatic experience for our students and for our community. And too often, we hear of accidents, or I know in the past, we've had other fatalities along Cliff Drive. So the college is very committed and supportive of the city's efforts to look at, do a study, a feasibility study, and evaluate options that will promote safety. We're looking forward to participating in the public process and providing further input. So just wanted to come here today to thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Bailey, would you just make some short remarks on this item related to the traffic engineering services, please, the contract?
Madam Mayor, good afternoon. My name's Derek Bailey with the Public Works Department. The purpose of this study is to really look at a couple of intersections along Cliff Drive, immediately in front of City College, so that we look at City College access and potential ways to improve their access, specifically their east campus driveway. It's kind of in an awkward location. It's on the inside of a curve. Sightlines aren't ideal. So we'll be working with City College to identify potential configurations to improve safety, as well as we're going to be looking at the offset intersections at Flora Vista and Mesa Lane, the western end of Cliff Drive. We've heard a lot of feedback from the community that they would like the road diet extended to the west. That intersection has always been the challenge, capacity-wise, just because of the way the traffic signal cycles. So we'll be working with the consultant to identify ways that we can work through that intersection.
Very good. And I know you're a regular guest at the Mesa Neighborhood Association, so I know you're doing public outreach, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to item, did you want to say something on this item, Ms. Sneddon? Go ahead.
Could you just clarify for all of us what the process will be? So this is, what stage are the studies, or public input, and then does it come back to council again, and what that order of operations is?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sneddon, ultimately, funding is going to be a challenge for a project. So what we're queuing ourselves up for is an active transportation program grant, and that application will be in the summer of 2020. So what we're doing between now and then is trying to identify solutions on certain areas of the corridor that have proved to be challenging. We're anticipating that the grant application will also include crosswalks, community-identified crosswalks. So we're planning on presenting those to the community this fall, along with some of the results from the intersection studies that we'll be doing with the consultant, trying to put together an overall Cliff Drive intersection project. And probably early 2020, we'd expect to come for City Council to present those to you.
Mr. Friedman has a question. Mr. Friedman has a question.
I just wanted to reiterate, because we've received a few emails over the last days, specifically about crosswalks, and that was my question, but I just want to reiterate or have you reiterate that as part of the public outreach process, in addition to the different roundabouts, crosswalks along Cliff Drive at strategic locations will be discussed and open to the public process, so they can forward suggestions to you or talk through that process specifically about crosswalks.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Friedman, absolutely. Crosswalks have been very challenging to implement on Cliff Drive, just because of the width of the street and the speed and the traffic volume, so just painted lines on the street wouldn't improve safety. So features like the rapid rectangular flashing beacons, perhaps medians or other features, will likely have to be part of the crosswalks, so they're more expensive. So we expect that they would be part of the grant application at the strategic locations that we identify with the public.
Okay. We'll close that item. We have a request to pull item fifteen, and then we'll go to item six, at request of a City Council Member. So, Mr. Wentz, you wanted to talk about fifteen, and this is Contract for Construction of Highway Safety Improvement Program Pedestrian Crossing Enhancements Project. Go ahead, please.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, Scott Wentz representing Cars Are Basic, you've got to be kidding me. Did anyone here bother to poll the ten-year accident statistics in this area? I doubt if you did. Mr. Bailey kindly gave me the statistics. Puesta del Sol, Caesita, and Alamar and State are not accident-prone intersections. Anytime you have cars interacting, you're going to have an accident. Caesita, what's the major problem up there? Drunks hitting parked cars. Puesta del Sol, not an accident problem, except if you start factoring in women making left-hand turns. Ooh, you can't say that, can you? But that's what the accident statistics shows. If you remember the little thing that I sent to the council members, and I brought this up before SB CAG, and you were there, I made a joke about it. If you really want to go after people, let's go after women. Let's stop them from driving, let's stop them from parking, let's stop them from doing anything. All of a sudden, you can't do that, but guess what? That is the transportation policy you're aimed at for the working middle class and the working poor. Does that work? Let me tell you something. If you're an attorney, you're an attorney, you're an attorney, if you were put in a room and said, "You're now the judges, and we're going to take it and go after this," and you had to say, "Okay, what's the evidence?" And the prosecution stands up, "We're going to save this for the pedestrians, we're going to save this for the bicyclists and so forth," and then the defense stands up and says, "Excuse me, this is all hearsay? Why is it hearsay? Because you can't prove bobouts, can you? You can't prove accidents on the streets because they're not happening." Well, if you're a judge, and you have to make a decision, and the defense stands up and says, "It's hearsay, therefore, there is no statistical evidence, you can't prove it, you have to dismiss the case." Don't you, Mr. Attorney, don't you, Miss Attorney, don't you, Mr. Attorney? If you're a judge pro tem, you can't convict unless you have evidence, and your transportation policy in this town is terrible. And let me tell you something, you're going to be facing a major firestorm as well as you are when this Bicycle Master Plan comes in on Alamar and State and Delavina and State, where the citizens and the businesses have already said at a ninety percent factor, they don't want any roundabouts, or they don't want to lose transportation. You're going to be facing a major fight. You can't do this. The old saying in the O.J. Simpson, "If it doesn't fit, you can't convict; if you don't have statistics, you can't do this."
Okay, very good. Ms. Sneddon, a question for the Speaker, or a comment on the item?
Is that the last of the public comment on this item?
On this item, yes.
With that, I would like to show my full support for staff recommendation, particularly at Alamar and Puesta del Sol, where multiple students cross regularly, families, young children, bicyclists on weekends and at all times, and where a crossing guard was hit in the crosswalk while holding up a stop sign, aiding children across the street, and I'd like to move the staff recommendation on this item.
Very good. There's a couple of other lights on, Mr. Gutierrez and Mr. Friedman. We'll go ahead and take fifteen out of sequence, if you like. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, so Mr. Friedman, there's a second there, Ms. Clerk. So you're good, Mr. Gutierrez?
I just wanted to clarify, Mr. Wentz, I appreciate your passion, but I am not an attorney.
Okay. Mr. Friedman, comments to this motion or this item, please?
I appreciate my colleague clarifying on the Puesta del Sol, and in addition on the Caesita. One in the staff report, just a clarification, it mentions the Cumbre Junior High, but it's actually Lachalena is the backway. In that intersection, and I'm glad Mr. Wentz brought up drunk drivers, because that is the way for hundreds of kids to get to Lachalena, and many of them walk or ride their bikes, and safer crossing is great along that intersection, and we have had fatalities, especially of kids, that occurred in the morning, not necessarily from drunk drivers, but those have occurred in our community. Going back, there was one in particular about ten years ago, so, and I know that my kids are going to be going that way starting next year, as well as many of the kids that I personally know, so I will be supporting this as well. Thank you.
We have a motion to move item fifteen forward. Sneddon, Friedman, all in favor? I... That seemed unanimous, thank you. So we go back to item six, and Mr. Dominguez, you have a comment on bequest from Nancy Gifford to the City of Santa Barbara Public Library. Go ahead, please.
And just a technicality, I worked for Mr. Garcetti after that case, and it's, "If the glove doesn't fit, you must acquit."
Okay.
I just wanted to point out, it's not in the Agenda Report, but you can go to nancygifford.com, and you can see the piece of art that we're voting to accept, and it's amazing, I saw it at the UC Santa Barbara Library opening a few years ago, and it's just amazing, and I'm a bibliophile, but I think anyone who sees it will be very impressed, and this is just an astounding moment.
Well, since you have the floor, if you would make a motion to move the rest of the consent calendar, except for seven and fifteen, which we've already voted on?
Thank you, so moved.
Okay. And a second from Ms. Sneddon, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're good with the consent calendar, and our first administrative... Oh, the Finance Committee had a meeting today? Mr. Dominguez, Finance Committee report, please?
Yes, so we looked at third-quarter revenue reports, and everything seems to be in order, and we accepted the report.
Very good, thank you. So number seventeen is our first hearing, Ms. Clerk?
Item seventeen, inclusion of ordinance amendments to Chapter thirty point one five zero for inclusionary rental housing.
Thank you.
And I'll just read Recommendation B here. Recommendation B, that council introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, amending Chapter thirty point one five zero of the Santa Barbara Municipal Code pertaining to inclusionary housing requirements for the average unit size density incentive program.
Very good. So staff, whenever you're ready, take it away, please.
Good afternoon, City Council Members. My name is Jessica Metzger, and I am the project planner for amendments to the AUD program, which is located in Chapter thirty point one five zero of our code. And I just want to start off by introducing the rest of the team that worked on the inclusionary rental housing amendments here before you today. It was quite a group effort across city. And so with me in long-range planning is Dan Golit, and then in the Housing Division is Laura Doubles, and then the City Attorney's Office lended their expertise in writing the ordinance itself, and then also to my left, we have David Dozema, who is our consultant from Kaiser Marston. So we are here today to present amendments to the inclusionary housing rental. And the purpose of inclusionary housing is really to provide new rental housing for moderate-income households. So moderate-income housing is not provided for currently in our community by developers, because they're really looking to maximize the profits of each new development that they have. It's also not provided by our nonprofit community, who primarily focuses and serves low-income needs. Additionally, we have found a nexus between the creation of housing units through the housing incentive program and the need for more moderate-income housing. And then, just to give you a quick background on the multi-unit housing incentive program, so this was initiative that was started in the two thousand and eleven general plan, and that general plan was a multi-year process with much public outreach to develop the policies that currently govern our city. One of those policies in the plan was to encourage smaller units in commercial and multifamily zones, close to transit, commercial services, and recreational opportunities. In addition, there are other policies in our general plan that speak directly to the production of affordable housing being one of the highest priorities in the City of Santa Barbara, and remember, this was back in two thousand and eleven, and that we need to take every opportunity to encourage the construction of new housing for extremely low, low, and moderate-income housing for our community. The multi-unit housing incentive program was adopted in two thousand and thirteen, and it carried forth this policy by developing incentives to encourage housing. It increased the density that was allowed on a property based on the unit size, so the smaller the unit size, the more density that you could get on a parcel. It also looked at development standards that existed across the city, and for the program boundary, reduced parking, setback, and open space requirements. Although this was an experimental program, and still is, due to the trial period that exists in the ordinance, currently we have two hundred and twenty-three new units across the city due to this program. Then this is the map of the program boundaries, so anything in color is part of the program. The light orange is a density of fifteen to twenty-seven dwelling units per acre. The dark orange is twenty-eight to thirty-six dwelling units per acre, and then the hatched area, which can exist over either of those other areas, is for priority housing, and that's the highest density of thirty-seven to sixty-three dwelling units per acre. Priority housing does have additional restrictions on it, that it must be either rental housing or employee-sponsored housing or cooperative housing. The Housing Task Force was started through the Adaptive Management Program, which is brought before the City Council by staff each year to review the efforts towards implementing our general plan policies. In two thousand and sixteen, looking at the Adaptive Management Program, the City Council determined that they would like to form a Housing Task Force to dive further into the housing incentive program and really look at some issues that had been brought up by the community. The Housing Task Force was created in two thousand and sixteen with three City Council Members, or three Planning Commission Members, and a member from the Housing Authority. In reviewing the housing incentive program, they had eleven public meetings to go over various aspects of the program. The Housing Task Force recommended hiring a consultant to do an economic feasibility and nexus study for inclusionary housing. The Housing Task Force then took the consultant's findings and presented them to City Council as an option for an amendment to the housing incentive program in two thousand and seventeen, and the City Council forwarded that recommendation to staff to start the work. In December of last year, staff came back to the City Council and requested a confirmation of this direction, because some time had lapsed between the two motions, and received the go-ahead to complete an additional update to the Kaiser Marston study and move forward on this inclusionary housing component. And now I will hand it over to David Dozema from Kaiser Marston, who will kind of dive deeper into the findings on this study.
Thank you. So first, just a little bit of background on Kaiser Marston. We're an economics consulting firm with three offices in California. I've been with the firm sixteen years. A core focus of our work is on residential mixed-use development and its feasibility, both with respect to assisting public agencies with specific transactions, as well as policy-type work, such as evaluating the feasibility of inclusionary requirements, or looking at potential community benefit-type programs. We like to think that the work we do on the transaction side informs and grounds the work we do on the policy side in sort of reality-based perspective. If you could advance. So what did we do for Santa Barbara specifically? We prepared an economic feasibility study that looks at the ability of average unit density incentive program projects to sustain an added inclusionary requirement, and as was mentioned by Ms. Metzger, that work was completed initially in December two thousand and seventeen, updated February two thousand and nineteen. We also prepared a nexus study. That nexus study was originally prepared to support a potential affordable housing impact fee. Midway through the work, AB fifteen oh five was adopted, and that allows the city to implement an inclusionary housing policy. You can establish that inclusionary policy without needing to do it as an impact fee. So the importance of the nexus study is now less, and I won't be focusing on it in the This gives an overview of development under your AUD program, focusing specifically on market rate projects. Eight hundred and fifty units altogether, and that considers everything from what's been completed, to what's under construction, to what's been approved, and to what's been proposed. Ninety-seven percent is rental, most is in two categories, that priority overlay category up to sixty-three units to the acre, and medium-high density up to twenty-seven units to the acre. This provides some information about building permits that have been issued over time under the program for market rate projects. It's split up in terms of time periods in a little bit of a choppy way that is based on the timing of when the data was available to us. So the first bar there is just the initial three years of the program, from two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and sixteen, during which time one hundred and thirty-nine units pulled permits, six projects altogether. The next bar is just April to December two thousand and sixteen, forty-eight units permitted, five projects. That went down then in two thousand and seventeen, but in two thousand and eighteen, it was back up to one hundred and thirty units that went forward with construction across ten projects, and then so far this year, forty-eight units with three projects. Most of those forty-eight units are in one larger project that had forty-one units. The economic feasibility study is based on preparing a pro forma feasibility analysis that looks at the development costs of units built under the AUD program, what they rent for or sell for, and the returns to the developer. Once we have kind of a baseline pro forma developed, we can then use it to test alternatives with respect to affordable housing, and that's what we've done. In interpreting the results of that analysis, a couple things to keep in mind. One is that we're looking at example projects. These aren't specific projects on specific sites intended to be broadly representative. You might have individual projects that are different. It's based on current conditions, and the way we've measured returns to the developer is using this metric called the return on cost, and what that is, is the net rental income that's generated by the project divided by its cost, and expressed as a percentage. So it's an annual return, you get it every year, and what we're looking for in terms of identifying a feasible project is a... And what we're looking for in terms of identifying a feasible project is a return within the 5% to 5.5% range. Below that, we characterize that as more marginally feasible. Above that, it's a little bit more comfortably feasible. That 5% to 5.5% range can also be translated just into a profit level. What we mean by that is just what is the project worth when it's built relative to what did it cost to build? So if you look at it that way, that same 5% to 5.5% range represents a profit of 14% to 26%. Generally, we want to see something in at least in the 10% to 15% range. And so, at the bottom end of that range, we're basically consistent with that lower end of what we'd be looking for, and then it goes up from there. Here's some rental data that's reflected in the study. The vertical axis here is just rent per month per unit. The horizontal axis is the size of the unit in square feet. The red line is what the Mark project, which is a built AUD project, is renting for. The magenta, below that, is the Arlington Village project. You'll see a larger blue X and a larger blue circle. That's what we have in our pro forma for the rents of the representative projects. You can see, we've been a little bit conservative in terms of the rental assumptions that we're using in our analysis. And we've also not wanted to reflect what the Mark project is getting because we think that that's probably the high end of the market. This is some more rental data. The first column that you see is moderate income rents. That's what would be charged to tenants of inclusionary units under the proposed ordinance, varies by bedroom size. Those rents are set at 100% of very median income, but households up to 120 would be able to qualify for those units. The next column is rents citywide. That's an average, and it reflects a number of older apartment units as part of the mix, mostly built in the 60s and 70s. Studios in one bedrooms are within the same range as those moderate income rents. Two- and three-bedrooms are quite a bit higher than the moderate income rents. And then, the last three columns are data for AUD projects specifically, and those are newer units. And they reflect higher rents because they command a premium over those older existing units. And so, those are a fair margin above both the citywide averages as well as the moderate income affordable rents. This is a summary of the pro forma analysis that we prepared for a priority housing overlay project, which has an estimated total development cost of $7.9 million for a 17-unit project. That includes land, hard costs of construction, design, permits and fees, and financing. The only thing it doesn't include is profit to the developer, which is handled separately. Units are estimated to rent for just under $2,900 a month. That translates for a 17-unit project on an annual basis into rent of about $612,000 a year. We adjust for expenses and property taxes, and that gets us to a net income of $425,000 per year. Dividing that by our cost of $7.9 million yields the return on cost estimate of 5.37%, which you see at the bottom. Because that's in the range we're targeting, we can conclude that's a feasible project a developer would go forward with that. Looking over to the 10% affordable column, then the impact of restricting the units as affordable is that we have 10% of the units that would have rented for $2,900 at market rate that are now restricted to about $1,700 a month. So that's, we're giving up $1,200 a month in rent on those 10% of units. And so, the effect is to reduce our operating income by about 5% overall, which pushes down the return on cost to 5.12%. Still within that targeted range of 5% to 5.5%. So we conclude that it's feasible. Here is another way to look at that same analysis with 10% inclusionary units. That net operating income that we get with a project that has 10% inclusionary units of $405,000 supports a market value of about $9.5 million at a 4.25% cap rate. That's the cap rate that the Mark project sold for in December. Deducting from that, the cost of sale and the cost of developing the project leaves a profit for the developer of $1.3 million, or about 17% is the estimate. So that's also within the range we would be looking for for a feasible project. This gives you the summary of other scenarios that we looked at. For the priority overlay column, which is the project up to 63 units to the acre, we found fees up to $30 a square foot to be feasible, up to 10% onsite affordable units to be feasible. Going to 15% onsite pushed that project into what we would call slightly marginal, meaning you would want to have some improvement in that project for it to fully pencil. The second column is the medium-high-density project outside of your central business district. Up to $25 per square foot fee looked feasible. 5% onsite looks feasible. With 10% onsite, it goes into the slightly marginal category, but it was sort of just below that 5% threshold that we were looking for, 4.98% to be specific. And as I showed you earlier, the rents that we're using in the analysis are somewhat conservative. And if those rents were in our pro forma were to increase by $10 a month, it would be enough to get that project into the feasible range. And so, we felt that was sort of close enough that we were comfortable recommending a 10% requirement as something that's feasible on that basis. Going to 15%, however, pushed it more into the marginal territory. You would need to have some more significant improvement in order for that to work. If the market rents were to rise, that would be sort of one basis you could get an improvement. Looking at where we were in 2017 to where we are in the most updated version of the study, we did see rising rents. On the other hand, costs also went up and sort of soaked up the benefit of those rising rents. So it's not our recommendation to sort of count on rising rents as something that's going to absorb the impact of going all the way up to 15%. You know, another thing that could sort of make 15% pencil better is if developers, assuming this requirement were to be implemented, price that into their pro forma and say, "Look, now I can only afford a site that's, you know, the land value is this much less." You could do that. The problem is, in Santa Barbara, you're a built-out city. Most of the sites that developers are going to be looking at have something there already that might generate rental income today, even if it's a parking lot that generates, you know, parking revenue, or it can be leased to somebody who needs parking. So there's just a limit on that downward pressure on land prices that you might get in more of a greenfield development type of situation. So, long story short, is that we don't feel comfortable recommending going all the way to 15%. I would just like to cover the last column now. You'll see it's infeasible in any scenario there. And that primarily is driven by a combination of two things. One is that it's in the central business district, where land is expensive. Our estimate used for this pro forma is $6 million an acre. And the other factor is the density of 27 units to the acre. So if you translate that $6 million to the acre and divide it across 27 units on that acre, it's north of $300,000 per unit just in land costs. And that's just too much for the project to bear as a land cost at that density. You just don't have enough units to spread it across. So back to the map. That black dotted line is the outline of the central business district. The orange is the medium-high-density area up to 27 units to the acre. So within that dotted line is generally where we say it doesn't pencil based on the higher land costs. It's, you know, right along the State Street corridor, not an area where you're going to find discounted land to build a project up to 27 units to the acre. You really would need a higher density in order to make a project work in that area of town. And with that, I'm going to pass it back to Jessica.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Dozema. So, to move forward with what we are proposing, I'd like to touch on the Regional Housing Needs Assessment. And so, RENA is created by the Department of Housing and Community Development at the state, and it filters down through SB CAG as far as the number of housing units that each city and county in Santa Barbara has to have produced by 2023. And so, this is our Regional Housing Needs Assessment chart here. And to date, as you can see with the yellow outline, we have only had four moderate income units created. And I just want to emphasize, that's units, that's not projects, that's actual units on the ground. So it's a very, very small number. And the people that qualify for this moderate income, which is 80 to 120 AMI, these are people that make just enough money to not be able to apply for Section 8 vouchers for rental assistance through the state. But they also cannot afford the market rate housing prices for rentals that David showed on his slides. So they're really kind of caught in the middle here as far as not having housing options and end up paying more of their salary than they normally should for rents in Santa Barbara. Also, in the recent state climate, housing and the Regional Housing Needs Assessment has become more and more important for cities to meet these goals based on other funding sources. So if we do not meet the RENA goals by 2023, we could no longer be eligible for other grants for homelessness, for veterans' services, grants for parks, and grants for mental health. So not only is this just tied to the housing that we need in our community, but it also is tied to other things that we've heard today already are very important for us to address in our city, and we continue to do that through these grants that we get through the state. So, staff's key recommendations that we're presenting to you today is for onsite affordable housing of 10% at the moderate income for projects of 10 units or more, and an in-lu fee charged for projects of 10 units or less, or fewer than 10 units, I'm sorry about that, at $25 per square foot. And so, that is our recommendation to you today. And as David illustrated, the Kaiser Marston Study shows that the market can support those two things. So, as the process goes with ordinance amendments, we took this to the ordinance committee to forward a recommendation to you. And the motion was that at least 10% of the units be restricted to moderate income households on projects of 10 units or more. And they, two of the members agreed that an in-lu fee of $25 per square foot was doable. They also requested that the City Council as a whole review the initial trial period of either eight years or until 250 units are constructed. And we estimate that at about fall of 2020. And then, also requested that you review the Planning Commission recommendations. And so, we went to ordinance committee both on April 30th and then May 14th to get this recommendation. Due to a lot of public comment, we had to continue it from the first meeting. We also took it first to the Planning Commission on March 7th, and they had recommendations as well. And so, Planning Commission made a first recommendation to your council to not adopt the inclusionary ordinance as drafted. And then, in a second motion, they asked that further study be reviewed to remove the trial period, include density bonus like the provisions for existing condominium and single-family inclusionary that exists in our code, to provide a peer review of the study, and to study process improvements to streamlining AUD project applications and building permit review, and to review the inclusionary with density, parking, and height as one package. Finally, to provide a choice to the developer between paying an in-lu fee or doing onsite inclusionary units or off-site inclusionary units. And so, our recommendation to the City Council would be to make the California Environmental Quality Act findings that the project is exempt under SEQA per these sections on the screen and as outlined on page 5 of your council agenda report, and introduce the ordinance amendments to Title 30 in regards to inclusionary housing for rental projects constructed pursuant to Chapter 30.150. In addition, due to that extra meeting that we had with the ordinance committee, as well as some additional questions and work that came out of the Planning Commission meeting, we are requesting that we amend the contract with Kaiser Marston to increase it by $6,000 today. And with that, that concludes staff's presentation, and the team is here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thanks. So Ms. Metzger, and you say your name, Desma?
Dozema.
Dozema? Okay. So, questions for them? Mr. Friedman, your light was on first. Questions, please?
Thank you. If you could pull up slide 17. So I just had a question in regards to the rents. So I noticed that the kind of newer projects, the rents are a lot higher average there's amenities, but does this slide factor into the count the age of some of the buildings? I think one of those on there was built in the 60s, if I recall, because it seems that newer projects, the rents would be higher. So did we account for that factor, like depreciation over time?
We didn't specifically account for depreciation, but your point is, and it's correct, that the older projects have lower rents. And the blue line represents those older projects. And, you know, because of their age and lack of, for example, modern amenities like these newer projects have, the rents are lower, and you see that everywhere.
Okay. And just for me, because I know the rents in the Mark is an example, they're not what they were intended to be for the original part of the program, but some of that could be attributed because they're newer buildings, some of that difference, not all of it, but some of it. Yes, no?
I don't think that's right. Ms. Brook has said before that the AUD was supposed to target workforce housing, so that higher rent.
Well, I'm talking about the difference between what the workforce is and the other part. So some of it has to do with the age of the buildings. That's my point.
Ms. Metzger, you have an answer?
Yes. Through the mayor, Councilman Friedman, so these newer AUD projects like the Mark and 604 East Coda have a lot more amenities than older projects that were built in the 70s that are really just a hallway and your apartments, and that's it. We have outdoor roof terraces, we have exercise buildings, or exercise rooms in these buildings, and taking also into account all of the new and upgraded fixtures that also increases their rent.
Thank you. A couple more questions. On the 10%, there was an email we received, or I received from the council, I think all of us did, on the question for the 10% inclusionary. On if there was a voluntary project that had low income, as a voluntary 10% low income, would it be excluded from the 10% workforce requirement? Can you speak to that question?
Yes. Through the mayor, Councilman Friedman, so there is a provision in the ordinance that states that if they are doing very low to low income, they're exempt from having to provide the moderate income.
Thank you.
And I can call out that section if you want to give me a minute.
Sure. At some point, it'd be just good to see it. And then, I have two other questions. And then, how long, for the inclusionary units, is there a covenant that is only for a certain number of years, and then eventually they would go to market rate? Or is it permanent?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilman Friedman, the length of that covenant is 90 years per the ordinance. And that's in keeping with- And that's in keeping with other affordable housing projects that Ms. Doubles has on her rolls currently.
Great. And then, one last question. I know the recommendations from the planning commission talk to the expiration of the AUD, but you said some interesting factors about being able to meet our RENA numbers and all the other implications with grants for everything from parks to others. If the AUD were to expire, what zoning comes into effect, and would this impact the no net loss provision of the state that they have now?
Yes, through the mayor, Councilman Friedman. So, if the AUD program was to expire, then we would revert back to the variable density program, which was something that we had in place for 15, 20 years, and it netted us a whole bunch of luxury condominiums. And was, we were just, were not getting any rental housing at all in the city under that program.
And then, that would, would that, if it were to go that way, where the AUD expired, would it affect the no net loss of our RENA numbers because of the zoning? Would there be a decrease in zoning which would impact our ability to meet our RENA numbers?
I would have to defer to the city attorneys on that. They're the experts on the no net loss provisions.
Thank you.
Ms. Osteringer, thank you so much for being here.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Friedman, Dave Osteringer, Assistant City Attorney. So, was the question, the, if we were to revert back to variable density, then our ability to provide affordable housing would affect our RENA numbers?
So, the variable density is, is the number of units less than what the AUD high priority is? Because what I'm saying is, we're zoned for a certain number of units to be able to, our zoning allows us to meet our RENA numbers currently. If we were to lose the AUD, would the number of units that were able to, that were zoned for, would that decrease and thereby impact our ability to meet our RENA numbers?
Is that a question for the city planner?
Yeah.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilmember, or Mayor, Tim Friedman. I think Ms. Brook can answer this more directly. What I understand is that with the AUD, there are, there are some units beyond our RENA requirement out there, but I don't know that the additional units, the extra density, if you will, is sufficient to counteract what would happen if you reverted to variable density. So, I think if you're, if the concern is that reversion of variable density will make it difficult or impossible to meet RENA numbers, I think that may be correct. Ms. Brook would know for sure.
Ms. Brook, you're welcome to come to the podium if that's easier for the musical chairs there. Okay.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. As Mr. Cologne mentioned, in our housing element, 2015 housing element, where we were able to show that we have enough land properly zoned to meet our RENA requirements, we made assumptions in the medium-high density areas of what, at that time, is a conservative assumption of 20 dwelling units per acre, whereas AUD, you could get more than that. And then, the high density, we assumed 30 dwelling units per acre, which is fairly conservative. But if we were to revert back to variable density, the maximum we could get is 27 units per acre. So, we could, it could get pretty challenging to still be able to show to the state that we could produce enough units to meet RENA if we dropped back down to 27 units as a maximum.
Thank you. That answers that question, and apologize if I didn't articulate it clearly the first three times.
No, this is, this is all pretty thick stuff, so we're good. Ms. Seddon, you're next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to ask a question to clarify slide 27, and it's also in the agenda report. The motion that we review the initial trial period of either eight years or until 250 units are constructed, I believe that was part of the list of recommendations from planning commission for Phase 2 and not a specific motion from the ordinance committee. I believe we specifically didn't want to forward that for this discussion, which, which I, I did send an email at some point, but I don't know. I just wanted to ask that as a question. Is it possible that that was part of the list, one of the examples on the list from planning commission and not part of the actual motion that we sent from ordinance?
Through the mayor, Councilwoman Seddon, so we're in a unique position here because we don't have adopted ordinance committee minutes yet from that meeting, but that was what we took away. So, it could be a mistake. It is on the planning commission's list of recommendations, but I thought we kind of heard that as more important than everything else during that discussion.
I just would like to clarify that I think that was, well, I'll speak for myself on that one, and maybe our other ordinance committee members can speak up, that I specifically wanted that not part of the recommendation and part of just the list in Phase 2 that we weren't ready for that portion until Phase 2 was complete. And I realize this is just a question part now and not discussion, but if there's answer to that, that was my recollection and went back and looked at it.
Ms. Seddon, if you're, that's a clarification that it didn't come from the ordinance committee, but it did come from the planning commission, we can go forward with that understanding up here if we're all getting the message.
Okay, thank you. And then, I have two quick questions. Where do the in lieu fee, in lieu fees go? And can we earmark these and set timelines for timely investment of those fees?
I'll let Ms. Doubles answer that. She administers that fund.
Madam Mayor and councilmembers, that, those in lieu fees would actually be earmarked to a certain account for affordable housing that we have. And there are regulations as to how that money then can be spent in order to produce more affordable units.
And is there a timeline for when those funds are spent?
No, they have to be, because there is so many restrictions on that, like different income levels have to be produced, then we just have to come up with the right project.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And then, on slide 21, just a quick question for Mr. Dozina. For the 15% onsite in the priority overlay, could you reiterate what would take that slightly marginal to being feasible, just for that one particular scenario?
I think it was pretty close, but let me just look at how close it was.
Yes, please. We can come back to that, too.
We can come back to that. Was that your final question?
I'm sorry, I've got it now, I'm sorry. It was 4.99% return on cost versus our threshold of five, so, I mean, it's sort of a rounding, rounding difference almost. You know, the 4.98% where I was making the point on the medium-high density as being very close, it's sort of a similar circumstance with regard to the priority overlay 15%.
So, that's what I was wondering. So, is this the same type of situation where adding $10 a month rent makes that feasible?
I haven't quantified it in the same way, but it's probably of something of that magnitude. Then, you get into the question, then, if doing something different on priority overlay versus medium-high density makes, makes sense. But, I mean, that, in our, it was our intention to make something, make a recommendation that made sense for projects as a whole. So, that's sort of the context for why 10% given that finding, but yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Also, a question from the gentleman from Kaiser Marston. I'm sorry, I really can't remember your name, but when you are developing these data, when I'm going back to the feasibility, and we're talking about the local data and boots-on-the-ground data and whatnot, can you give us a little insight as to your methodology? There was some question brought up by some other testimony during some of these hearings regarding how much, well, anybody that's developed anything here knows that Santa Barbara can be pretty special when it comes to developing projects. And I was kind of wondering how we harvested data, where a lot of that came from, if it was, if there was some actual contact with experienced developers, or if you get the statistics out of where we are, what we do in terms of the, in the community development department.
So, I think I'll separate my answer into two parts. One is, I call it the income side, it's the rents and the sales prices, and all of that is, is local information. It's readily accessible locally. On the cost side, we have local information that we extract as wherever we can and as best we can. That's, you know, more, let me just say it's more opaque to get that, that cost information. When we did the 2017 study, we spoke with three local developers and including discussion of development costs and other things in their pro forma for their specific projects. One of those developers we spoke to, I believe it was the developer of the Mark project, I don't, I don't, off the top of my head, I don't remember the other two. In preparing this 2019 update, we trended those, those costs that we looked at in 2017 based on a couple of pieces of information. Some of those pieces of information were third-party sources that, that address either Southern California or Santa Barbara specifically. We also looked at tax credit applications for affordable projects, that's publicly available information on costs and how, you know, tax credit applications for a couple of, one specific project actually was submitted in, I think, 2017, and then resubmitted a year or so later, and that enable, enables, you know, understanding of how costs have changed over time. With respect to permits and fees information, which is an ingredient in the costs, we look at, we looked at actual permits and fees for three specific projects in Santa Barbara. So, we gather that local information as best we can, but, but, you know, there's, there's differences from project to project, and we don't have perfect information in that regard. And we did not go back out and speak with developers again in 2019 as we did in 2017.
Right. I was thinking about, number one, timeline for permits and fees, which can be onerous from time to time. And then, remind me, I believe last time we spoke about the in lieu fees. There was a change from 2017 to 2019 as far as the recommendation, was that, did we go to 2025, remember that correctly? Was that?
You did.
Okay. Just because I was thinking about that in terms of looking at things like AMI, which has been relatively flat, in fact, has retreated very slightly. And so, I'm just trying to get a feel for the whole big picture and what we're, why we're, what we're trying to accomplish here and what we're trying to discuss, so, thank you for your answer.
Okay. If that's it for the questions, we'll go to public comment. Leslie Wiscombe is here. She's the chair of our planning commission. Come on up, Ms. Wiscombe. And I understand you want to use the projector?
Yes.
And show us some images.
Commissioner Campanella is going to put the slides up for me when it comes time, but if you could just bear with me for a minute?
Sure, take your, yeah, please, take your time.
Because I think, I think we need, we need to know how to operate this serious piece of equipment.
Good. Mr. Casey, I think there's some more speaker slips snuck in behind you. Look. And get your speaker slips in now, I'll stop taking them at, when the big hand is on the tin. We've got a big agenda. Thank you.
Okay. And I do, I do have copies of the slides for all the council members.
Lay it on us, let us have your slides.
Okay. I have 12. I don't know if that's the right amount or not. I think it is, but, perfect, good. Okay. Thank you very much for passing those out. Okay. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of city council. I am Leslie Wiscombe, representing the planning commission. From our March 7, 6, 1 vote recommending city council return the draft inclusionary rental housing ordinance to the planning commission for further study and recommended amendments. To preface my remarks, I want to emphasize that the entire commission strongly supports an inclusionary rental housing ordinance, but we need an ordinance that finds the sweet spot, that both continues our housing production and is financially feasible for the industry that produces our housing. We must all remember, we can't get the latter without the former. The commission felt that, as written, the proposed ordinance teeters on the brink of infeasibility for our industry professionals and will likely have a negative impact on housing production. The areas that the planning commission believe require further study include, number one, the AUD test period. We're nearing the end of the program, and there's concern about the uncertain deadline that's preventing our local housing professionals from submitting new applications. And this concern was widely and strongly expressed at both the planning commission meeting and the ordinance committee meetings. Number two is inclusionary density bonus. This will be discussed further in the examples I show you. Number three is allowable options in the proposed ordinance. That means in lieu fees versus construction of units versus offsite options. And number four is the $25 per square foot in lieu fee in the proposed ordinance that was brought up at the ordinance committee meetings and is worthy of further discussion. A $20 per square foot fee was originally submitted and recommended by the KMA study. And to show you just how these issues can impact rental housing development, I'd like to show you three specific examples that compare our existing 15% inclusionary ownership ordinance to the proposed 10% inclusionary rental ordinance before you today. So, we'll start with example number one, and this is assuming we have a four-unit development of 1,000 square feet per unit for a 4,000 square foot total. So, under the, our existing 15% for sale ownership housing ordinance, we have a $16,317 in lieu fee for four units totaling $65,268, minus a credit for one of the units for a grand total of an in lieu fee of $48,951. That represents about $12 a square foot. The project qualifies for a 25% in lieu fee reduction due to the unit size of 1,000 square feet. And the in lieu fee is obviously paid on three units, not four. And you have an option to build an inclusionary unit rather than pay the fee if, if the developer so chooses. On our proposed ordinance, which is 10%, we have the 4,000 square foot development times $25 a square foot for the in lieu fee equalling $100,000. And there's no allowance in the proposed ordinance to build rather than pay the in lieu fee, and isn't our goal to build moderate income units. So, in conclusion, the ownership housing development with 15% inclusionary is about $51,000 or 51% lower than the in lieu fee for the rental housing development with proposed 10% inclusionary. Under the existing ordinance, there's a one-unit exemption, and there's no exemption in the proposed. And the developer has an option of building the unit in the ownership program, not in our proposed ordinance. So, if you go to example number two, and this is an eight-unit project of 1,000 square feet per unit for a total of 8,000 square feet. In our existing ownership housing inclusionary ordinance, again, the same fee, $16,317, and that has the 25% reduction for the unit size of 1,000 square feet, and times eight units equals $130,536 total in lieu fee. That works out to be about $16 a square foot. Or, you can build one unit. In the proposed ordinance, which is our 10% one for rental, the 8,000 square foot development times $25 a square foot pays a $200,000 in lieu fee. And there's no option in the ordinance, again, to build the unit rather than pay the fee, and our goal should be to build the units. So, in conclusion, the 15% inclusionary provision in our existing ownership ordinance is about $69,000 or 35% less than the in lieu fee. is about $69,000 or 35% less than the in lieu fee in our, in, for the rental housing project. And the developer has the option of building the unit, but they don't have that option in our proposed ordinance. Okay. I just want to go to example number three, this is the last one, this is a bigger development. So, we have a 15-unit development at 1,000 square feet per unit totaling 15,000 square feet. So, 15 units times the 15% inclusionary in our existing is 2.25 units, and you are allowed to round down, so you can build two units. And because if you're building onsite ownership inclusionary units, you have a bonus entitlement of two additional units to the project. In our proposed ordinance, the 15-unit project times 10% inclusionary component equals one and a half units, and you have to round up, so you're going to build the same thing, two inclusionary units. And there's no option in the proposed ordinance to build one unit and pay an in lieu fee on half a unit, and there's no inclusionary bonus entitlement allowed. So, we have, again, conclusions, we have an inclusionary bonus entitlement on our existing owner, on our existing ownership ordinance, and the developer has other ownership options, other options for compliance with, with the inclusionary provisions in our existing ordinance that don't exist in our new one. So, these examples illustrate that the ordinance as proposed places a greater financial burden on for-rent projects than our, than our current inclusionary ordinance does on for-sale projects. Since our goal is to increase the supply of inclusionary rental units, this is an important reason why further study by the Planning Commission is warranted. With the exception of the KMA peer review, our other recommendations outlined in your staff report are part of a larger work effort currently being undertaken by staff. Regarding peer review of the Kaiser-Marston Study Update of February 2019, and Council Member Rouse actually asked this, the Planning Commission was very concerned to learn that no local professionals were contacted to validate the assumptions in the study update, including construction cost increases and cost of time spent in permitting, both of which have a very big impact on projects' economic feasibility. Some of the additional ordinance components proposed to be studied and potentially recommended by the Planning Commission should assist in balancing developer impacts with the continued production of rental housing. The Planning Commission recognizes the Council's desire to implement an inclusionary rental ordinance as soon as possible. The Commission's schedule has been very light so far this year, and I am confident that with your direction and staff support, we will be able to turn, return our recommended amendments to the proposed ordinance to you in a timeframe that is acceptable to you. To conclude, we request that you return the proposed inclusionary rental ordinance with 10% to the Commission for recommended action in the following areas, the AUD test period, the inclusionary bonus allowances for rental housing, three, inclusionary options similar to the existing options that exist in the inclusionary ownership program, and four, study of the $25 per square foot in lieu fee in the proposed ordinance. We believe the ordinance as currently drafted will not accomplish what we all desire, to build rental housing for our missing middle, and in fact, it may halt rental housing production altogether. We all know that we can do better to continue housing production we need and begin to fill the missing middle hole in arena numbers. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Chair Wiscombe. I'd like to ask, thanks, Ms. Metzger or Mr. Gullett to respond to that. There might be some of us up here who would like to send this back to the Planning Commission. If not, how would you respond to the information that was presented that, to address some of the concerns, would it, thorough analysis that she presented?
Madam Mayor, just to, just to, for clarification, on our, our current ownership inclusionary program?
Yeah.
It's, it's a two-tiered program, so there's different rules for projects that are less than 10 units and projects more than 10 units. So, it's, it's true that projects 10 units or more, it's a 15% inclusionary requirement, but projects less than 10 units, it's a 5%. That's why we're seeing much smaller numbers for the in lieu fees for the existing inclusionary for condos and single-family houses.
And so, do you think staff would be able to address these concerns if we wanted to not send it to the Planning Commission, Mr. Gullett?
So, we, we hired Kaiser-Marston, who, who looked at the feasibility and the nexus of an inclusionary program for rentals. It is, it is looking at apples and oranges. Our condo inclusionary ordinance is from 2004, it hasn't really been updated, and it is, it is difficult to, to compare the two.
Okay. Ms. Sneddon, did you have questions for Ms. Wiscombe? Should I call her back, or you have?
I suppose it's, it's related, Ms. Wiscombe, or for staff, if, it's a two-part question, Madam Mayor, thank you. Can you remind us Phase One and Phase Two? I know we're looking at the AUD ordinance in two different phases, and then possibly after, you remind us of what's in each phase, if I could ask Ms. Wiscombe if it's conceivable that we could look at the recommendations that the Planning Commission forwarded as part of Phase Two? If I could have that as a two-part question.
Yes. Madam Mayor and Councilwoman Sneddon, so, Phase One of the amendments which were adopted in January looked at increasing the parking requirements outside of the Central Business District for those larger units with three bedrooms or more, and that was to address neighborhood compatibility concerns on the outer fringes of that map of our AUD program. It also looked at taking away the parking incentive from those mobile home parks to disentivize any redevelopment of those mobile home parks to a different use, until which time we can strip them out of the map during the second phase of the amendments, and...
And Phase Two covers what? Were you done with Phase One?
So, that was Phase One, and then, when we presented our confirmation of direction to you in December, that was Phase One. Inclusionary was separate from Phase One and Phase Two, and we heard from you that it was an important component to come faster than Phase Two. And so, the Phase Two amendments are underway, I'm happy to say. We had our first public workshop, I think you were there actually, Councilwoman Sneddon, in May, and it was very well attended, and we had a lot of public comments on parking changes that could occur in the program, as well as maybe moving some density from different places to different places, including putting density along State Street in that area where Mr. Dozema showed that it's infeasible to do any housing along State Street currently. Does that get your question?
It, it does, thank you. And so, in Phase Two, which is currently underway, when, is it about a year timeline where we're expecting to see that?
Yes. Madam Mayor and Councilwoman Sneddon, so, we expect to have at least one more public workshop. We have that currently tentatively scheduled for the end of July, and we'll be sending out notification of that soon when a few pieces fall into place on that. And that is where we'll be presenting the findings from our first workshop to the public, and making sure that during that first workshop, we didn't miss anyone who would also like to be part of this process. And depending on the outcome of that meeting, we might have one more meeting, or it might be enough direction so staff can go back. And so, then what we would do in the fall, so August, September, would be really doing the actual meet of writing the ordinance amendments changes, and then looking at what SEQA requirements, we might have to do some additional addendums to the EIR for what we plan to present. And also, there's kind of a large mapping component to the changes that we're doing, so those are big staff-lifting things that take time. But, once we have that done, we believe that we could be in the review process with the Architectural Board of Review and the HLC and the Planning Commission by late winter, early spring of next year. So, if we have one meeting each of those, we could be before Ordinance Committee and City Council in late spring, early summer. You can never tell how many meetings you might need to flesh out all of the issues, so that's where you can't get the quite end note, but somewhere next year, early.
I appreciate that, and we do want to do it right, so I think that the time taken... So, then that is my question, that, so Planning Commission is part of that Phase Two, which could take into account all of the recommendations that were forwarded from Planning Commission, possibly?
Possibly. Madam Mayor and Kristen, or, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Sneddon. There is one recommendation in there that is not on the table, and that's looking at height changes. We have never been directed through the Adaptive Management Program nor the Housing Task Force to look at changing height and increasing it in the city, so that would have to be a separate initiated issue by your council.
Okay. And I would agree with that. So, that, that helps me and reminds me that the inclusionary was a separate piece to be considered separately, and I, I just wanted the opportunity for Ms. Wiscombe, if you have a response to that, if, that the order of operations at this point is the inclusionary piece is separate, and then if that is a fixed point, the rest is taken care of in Phase Two.
Yeah. I, I do agree with that, that was, and that was made very clear at the Ordinance Committee, but if you're going to have an inclusionary ordinance, I think it has to be one that works and balances, and not one that is, as the examples that I showed. Mr. Gullett's correct in one response, but if you read the existing ordinance for, for sale, the inclusionary ordinance for for sale, it, it gives you a discount for the number of units in the less than 10 category. So, it gives you, it gives you an advantage in, in, obviously a monetary advantage, in, if you're building nine units to, to two units, you get, you get definitely a monetary break. You do not get that in the, in the rental ordinance as it's proposed, not at all. And, and I think the examples were, were quite clear. So, there are things that can be done in the rental ordinance that would make it more fair, I think, to, and I believe that about 45% of our projects are less than 10 units. I think that's right. I might be wrong on that, but, so it's a, it's a big percentage, and it's worth, it's worth getting right. The AUD test period, I think, Councilmember Sneddon, you're probably referring to that for Phase Two, or, yeah, and that's entirely up to council. We just heard compelling testimony that you're not going to submit, from developers that just said they're not going to submit building applications now because there, it's too uncertain. Why go through all that, that expense and time on a program and then be told, sorry, the program ended? So, that's, you know, that's where we are on that. So, does that answer your questions?
It does.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I read in the report that the majority of the projects are less than 10 units. Can anyone clear that up now? Or come back to us? We still have more public comment. Okay. We'll come back to that then. Rob Fredericks with the Housing Authority, you're next. Lindsay Baker, Alejandra Malgoza, Lisa Carlos, welcome.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and City Council Members. On behalf of the Housing Authority of the City of Santa Barbara, I'd like to express our agency's continuing support for adopting an inclusionary rental housing ordinance. Specifically, we are supportive of the proposed requirement of developments under the AUD with 10 units or more to provide 10% of the units as inclusionary units affordable to households at the moderate income level. Santa Barbara, like the rest of the state, is in the midst of an acute housing crisis with a deficit of desperately needed housing that is affordable to households across all income levels. And the hyper-commodization of housing is negatively impacting the workforce in many communities, including Santa Barbara. The AUD program was established to promote construction of smaller, more affordable rental units by allowing higher densities and lower parking ratios than would otherwise be permitted. What seems to have been lost is the more affordable part of the goal. Inclusionary zoning can be a tool to help us achieve this goal. Clearly, it matters at what percentage the inclusionary requirement is set. KMA's original Nexus Study and their update supports a 10% inclusionary level. Now, much has been said in the past that the study, about the study accuracy, and some will say today that the study is flawed. However, this is what KMA does, they do these studies, and it provided them, provided many studies to other communities. My team has reviewed the study and found their analysis to be consistent with local housing development conditions. Some will say that the inclusionary policy will cause housing production to cease if enacted. I do not believe this to be the case. Studies show that inclusionary housing programs, if created appropriately, can be successful. In fact, inclusionary programs have been enacted in more than 800 communities across the nation, many of them in California. Finally, I will say that I have a great deal of respect for your Planning Commission, and they have the difficult task of crafting land use policies that work for the benefit of Santa Barbara. This is a big lift, but they have many arms to do the lifting. I do believe there are some fixes needed with the overall AUD ordinance, which you have heard today, and I commend the Planning Commission for their work on these issues. Specific to the inclusionary ordinance, I believe the in lieu fee may be too high and should be harmonized with the for-sale product that was talked about earlier, to allow, and to allow owners of less than 10 units to have the option of providing onsite affordable units. If this needs to return to the Planning Commission, then I suggest it be remanded back to them as a top priority and with the direction to return to City Council with a final ordinance on a very quick pace. And if we don't, if we do not implement an inclusionary housing policy, how does the city intend to meet its goals of moderate income housing under the housing element? Thank you for your time.
Mr. Fredericks, I saw in the report that, that KMA had originally suggested $20 per square foot, and is that, was that something you're more comfortable with rather than 25?
Yeah. After, when you look at the, the differences that was laid out by Chair Wiscombe of the Planning Commission and Commissioner Campanella, I agree that it's, it's too disparate, and I think there, it should be closer to 20.
Don't go away. Mr. Dominguez has a question for you? Is that right?
Yeah. I wanted to double-check, so are you okay with 15% for the priority overlay? You said you're recommending 10, but I'm curious why you're not recommending 15?
I, I just, I feel that that's a, 10% is a reasonable compromise to, to meet all the different factions in, in Santa Barbara. I do think that also, we need to look at increasing priority over, increasing the density in the, in the Central Business District to priority overlay in order to adjust for the feasibility there.
Okay. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Lindsay Baker, you're next. Ms. Malgoza, after her.
Good afternoon, Mayor Mario, City Council Persons. I'm Lindsay Baker, speaking for the League of Women Voters. Having been present at the Ordinance Committee hearing that prepared this ordinance, and seeing the difficulty with which they prepared this ordinance, and hearing the Planning Commission's proposal, we all have the goal of increasing moderate income housing. However, at this point in time, it appears that this issue is being approached piecemeal, one issue at a time, without a general overview. The proposal by the Planning Commission today recommends looking at five various areas to get a better view of this issue. We feel that this is the plan that we should go with and look at this further and get a more overview rather than piecemeal issues.
Okay. Very... Okay, very good. Ms. Malgoza, come on up. You'll be followed, Lisa Carlos, are you still here? Okay, thanks.
Hello, Madam Mayor, Council. So, as cause, we have supported an inclusionary housing ordinance set at 15%, the highest available to the city, without needing to pass any further legal hurdles. We agree that with further incentives to developers, such as higher height restrictions and parking, but we need that 15%, and we need it now, to make sure that we are creating housing stock for our working-class communities. At the very least, we support a geographically targeted program that would target 15% for areas where we have much housing stock below market rate, that being in the east side, in the west side of Santa Barbara. However, to keep it simple and inclusive, we support 15% statewide. And, most of all, thank you so much for all of you for leading this conversation and addressing this housing crisis that continues to push out our communities. We know it's been a constant conversation, so thank you.
Very good. Ms. Carlos, thanks for waiting. I just saw your note.
Yeah, it's okay, no problem. Madam Mayor and City Council Members, my name is Lisa Carlos. I'm a current resident of Santa Barbara, who spent 24 years living in Redwood City in the Bay Area. There, I witnessed what happens when a city fails to move quickly and hold developers accountable for mitigating the adverse impacts of their projects, not only on traffic, but affordable housing. When Redwood City chose to deregulate land use in its downtown, property values soared as speculative investors rushed in buying up old housing stock in nearby working-class neighborhoods. This led to the eviction of many low- and middle-income tenants, as naturally affordable housing was converted or demolished to make way for new, more profitable apartments and high-rise office buildings. Despite additional people living downtown, new retail and restaurant businesses struggled because there weren't enough service workers, since they could no longer afford to live there. Santa Barbara's 2017 KMA study factually foreshadows a similar scenario. It connects the dots by showing a nexus between new market-rate housing and the increased demand for service workers. They estimate that for every 100 new market-rate units built, there is an additional 18 to 35 affordable housing units needed for workers in the moderate-to-low-income range. Therefore, if the appropriate amount of affordable housing isn't built concurrently with new market-rate housing, rental prices might go up, not down. In short, market-rate projects that don't include affordable housing units or an impact fee will only make our housing crisis worse. That is why I'm taken aback by some who have commented at the Ordinance Committee, they are asking, some developers are asking for even more incentives, such as density overlays, the lifting of building height restrictions, and a guaranteed rate of return, to build the affordable housing that is ironically needed to mitigate the impact of their own projects. Sadly, I fear our AUD program has gotten way off track. I thought teachers, first responders, service workers who support our $1.8 billion tourist industry were meant to be the primary beneficiaries of the AUD program, not developers of luxury market-rate apartments. As city staff status shows, we have built 811 market-rate units in the past three years, which is 50% of the way to meeting our arena target for the year 2023. Meanwhile, only four homes, or less than 1% of housing at the moderate-income level, has been built toward that target. Producing housing for moderate-income workers is exactly where this ordinance should and does fog it, and is desperately needed now. For the sake of residents who are busy working to support our local economy and our quality of life, please move swiftly and approve this ordinance. After listening to the Planning Commission, I would recommend, however, that we give developers the option, developers of less than 10 units, the option of building onsite. I think that's a fine recommendation. I wouldn't recommend sending this back to the Planning Commission. I'd simply make an amendment to your ordinance to say you'd give them that flexibility. Thank you.
Thanks. Austin Hurley, still here? We'll call him back if he comes back. Dick Flax, you're next. Sheila Lodge, after you. Greg Wrights, Linda Honigman. Mr. Flax, welcome.
Madam Mayor and Council, I'm Dick Flax, representing SBCAN, Santa Barbara County Action Network. We, in principle, support the 15% rather than 10% definition of what's needed for the inclusionary piece of this. On the other hand, we agree that you should not be bogged down further in arguments about that percentage. If we can reach a consensus at 10%, let's go for it, because the urgency is evident. And, I guess I came up here with the idea of boosting up your sense of urgency. That's why I don't like the Planning Commission wanting to take this back for another several months. You ought to do, as quickly as possible, a statement about the need for inclusionary piece to the AUD program. Put that in there. Maybe that will clarify for those developers willing to work within that framework, that there is some certainty here. I wonder, and I can't get an answer to this, how many units could still be developed under the AUD program with this inclusionary added? Is there, are there any way to know that? I think you, I'm surprised that no one has asked that question. But it seems to me that getting rid of the cap on the, or the timeframe that's been set for AUD, that's an important recommendation of the Planning Commission. I don't know why we need to wait on that. Let's get this in place. I think the evidence is that this is an innovative program in terms of stimulating rental housing, but it is a failed program with respect to creating the housing we need. We don't need any more market-rate housing. We need the moderate-income housing. And it seems to me part of your charge, the city's charge, if you put inclusionary in, is to find developers who are willing to build that housing. That's what we need, the developers to build that housing, the methodology to build that housing, not to figure out what the proper alignment is for those to continue to make profit on it, want to make profit. That's the secondary or tertiary goal. So I would say if you signal that you're going to put this 10% or 15% or some combination of the two, get that done, and then let's get a call and a search and a method for finding developers who want to work on meeting the needs of the city and the state. And I just, I'm upset, because I think the legislature has just failed to do what it needed to do to deal with the housing crisis. Let's not replicate that here. Let's make a signal to the community that we're going to do something.
Okay, okay. Ms. Lodge? You'll be followed by Greg Wrights, Linda Honigman, Miki Flax.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Council Members. I'm Sheila Lodge, the one note on the Planning Commission. The purpose of the Kaiser-Marston Nexus study was to determine the relationship between housing units developed through the AUD incentive program and any increased need for affordable housing. I've not heard anyone argue that their conclusion that it does create a need for more affordable housing is incorrect. The AUD incentive program already provides very large incentives to developers. Before it, only three stories were allowed in multiple zones within 45 feet. Now, four stories may be built. That is almost, that is about a third more land to develop. Before the incentive program, parking requirements were much higher, including up to two parking spaces per unit, plus guest parking, requiring only one parking space and no guest parking. And, along with reduced setback requirements, gave even more land to develop. Some believe that if enough new market-rate units are built, rents will go down. Santa Monica has a population, is the same size as Santa Barbara, but has a population density 2.3 times Santa Barbara's. Yet its average rent is $1,350 a month more than Santa Barbara's. And that's not because people are doubling up. The number of people per household in Santa Monica is slightly under 2, in Santa Barbara it's 2.5. There's been concern that all this is going to slow things down, the uncertainty and so on, but the Kaiser-Marston chart showed that 48 units are in the works in the first four months. Seems to me a substantial amount of proposed development. Should it turn out that because of the inclusionary requirement, no AUD incentives, no AUD incentive projects are built, the city will not be harmed? All new units mean more residents in the city. More residents mean more demand for services, generally in low-wage categories. Evermore demand for affordable housing is created by the new market-rate units, and the jobs housing imbalance worsens. With the inclusionary requirement, the chance of balancing that impact created by new market-rate units with at least some moderate-income affordable units comes to pass. I urge you to concur with the staff recommendation. This ordinance could have been adopted over a year ago, and it should have been. Please, adopt it now. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Wrights, still here? There you are.
Madam Mayor, City Council, affordable housing is very important in Santa Barbara, and I have no problem with a 10% inclusionary housing requirement. However, I have absolute faith in the people on Planning Commission, that they are housing advocates, and they want to get this right. And I think the best thing to do would be to send it back to them to make sure it's right before it gets passed. I think they have really smart people who study the issue very closely, and if they're saying it's not ready, then I think it's not ready, and you should send it back and let them get it right before you pass an ordinance. Echoing what the League of Women Voters also said, that a comprehensive plan for affordable housing is important, and piecemealing it is a bit dangerous. I have certain detailed issues with the Kaiser-Marston study that I would love to have an audience at Planning Commission to share my concerns with that. But, again, I believe that they are housing advocates, and they'll get it right. So I would urge you to send it back to them for that purpose. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Ms. Honigman? Miki Flax, after you. Matthias Esterbrook, Lorna Boyd, welcome.
Madam Mayor, City Council, I support an inclusionary requirement of at least 15% affordable units for future rental developments, and the proposed in lieu fee of $25 per square foot. But I want to offer a different approach as we move beyond this decision and continue to seek solutions to our local housing crisis. The tenants' rights issues will be front and center, as long as we have a near-zero vacancy rate. So Job One is getting many more appropriate units built. The key to that goal is to work closely with our local housing professionals. There are probably a few developers who have made a great profit, the folks that built the Mark, perhaps, but today, developers and contractors are dealing with increased uncertainties, and a target of 5% profit is far from a sure thing. Let's also acknowledge local assets, like our world-class Santa Barbara Housing Authority, and good citizen businesses, like the Tobes Group and architects Brian Cornell and Dede Picard, who want a vibrant, affordable city as much as the rest of us. As we continue to recruit partners like these, let's consider doing the following. One, change our mindset. Erase the stigma associated with public housing, which here looks like luxury condos, low income, which is up to $56,000 income for a single person, and renters, who comprise 60% of this city. Two, change our development priority from moderate income to low income, which includes many of those younger workers aged 25 to 44 we have been losing. The focus on the moderate or above-moderate income doesn't make sense to me for rentals downtown. Most people who can afford the high rents and want to live here full-time would purchase a home. Three, from this new perspective, we have more development opportunities, such as, help developers and the Housing Authority pencil out affordable units with state-mandated density bonuses. For example, if you have 20% low-income units, which could go to that younger workforce, you can add 35% more units. We can also use the 62 unit per acre allowed for limited equity cooperatives. That can have smaller units, and in some cases, shared kitchens, and less emphasis on cars. We can promote public and private partnerships, use of city-owned land with combinations of owner-renter and/or market-rate and subsidized units. Let's allow height increases to accommodate five stories above ground, with restrictions such as setbacks from the street and no significant blocking of views. I've been to both of the larger planning workshops, and height increases were well-supported. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Ms. Flax?
I'm Miki Flax. I've been working on this for some time, and I think, finally, we might be getting somewhere, though there's some element that wants to postpone it even further. The Planning Commission had its shot at this. They made recommendations. It seems to me that it's up to you, all of you, to decide whether or not to accept those recommendations or reject them. You don't have to send everything back to anybody who makes a suggestion to you. I have been trying, since the passage of AUD, to get certain preferences written into the law. I was told, "Not now, Phase Two, you have to wait for Phase Two." Phase Two may have come and gone, and I still have not seen any discussion of those preferences by anybody. Let's get serious. I mean, there are people living on streets, living in their cars. Most of our population is what the federal government calls rent-burdened. The playing field has become more uneven by the minute between landlords and tenants, and we're arguing about whether 17% profit rate is enough for them. I think I'd be very happy with any business that gave me a 17% profit. So, I got a copy of Dede Picard's letter, which he sent to all of you, and I think that his proposals can pretty much be included in the ordinance, the 10% inclusionary zoning ordinance that you passed today. And they include specifically, as you know, encourage projects to take advantage of state bonus density, maximum height of 50 feet, establish objective design review and objective zoning standards, consistent with state law, and that don't reflect personal or subjective judgment. That's where a lot of our problem lies, and that's something that should be dealt with at some phase. Maybe when we get to Phase 27, we'll be able to deal with it. I hope not.
Matthias Esterbrook, please. I saw him. Lorna Boyd, Steve Fort, Anna Marie Gott.
Thank you for listening to all this testimony today. I'll keep my comments short. I concur with Sheila Lodge on all of her recommendations, and at the risk of offending developers, please pass this ordinance. Too many developers have slipped through the cracks already. Please stand by the date of today's cutoff for development with a permit in hand. So, I think that's crucially important. I think that we, as we're looking to change the fabric of our community, which this is certainly going to do, I think we need to be very judicious in that process, and very thoughtful. And I encourage you to do so. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Fort?
Thank you, sorry for the slight delay. Steve Fort, I'm a board member with the Coastal Housing Coalition. We acknowledge the need for affordable housing, but we also want to emphasize the overall need for housing in general. We're concerned that adding the inclusionary component to the AUD program could discourage or disincentivize use of the program, and discourage development of housing in general. We're also concerned about how it might impact projects that are already in the pipeline, how are they going to be affected? The Planning Commission recommended not adopting the inclusionary ordinance, but instead recommended the package of, that it'd get looked at with a package of other potential revisions and things to study and consider. and things to study and consider. We prefer you look at it as that package, as the PC recommended. But if you're going to move forward and understood how the process works, and this isn't a different sort of work-plan item, but if the inclusionary item is going to move forward, we would sincerely urge you to listen to the Planning Commission recommendations, and recommendations from local experts too, who are also saying this could be a disincentive, and consider incentives or items, for example, the density bonus for inclusionary units, or streamlining the design review process and approval process, notably to revise the potential for late hits, and to give strong consideration to the flexibility with the fees and where units can be built that was brought up by Chair Wiskom here just a few moments ago. You know, if you read in the Pacific Coast Business Times, "Other communities are changing their rules, and they're accepting this reality that we need a lot more housing. The state is more and more involved." The program has been working, and its units are coming online. We hope this doesn't undermine the program, and what happens if it does undermine the program, and then we're digging ourselves more of a hole with the state and the arena allocations that we need to meet. But we would urge you to listen to the Planning Commission, consider what local experts are saying when they say that the inclusionary requirements need to be balanced with incentives and flexibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Melor is giving you her time. Is that right? Okay. So five minutes?
Good afternoon. My recommendation, we need a tax expert, because one of the things that we really did not look at, which is the fact that REITs actually are able to depreciate their... depreciate... you know what? I better read it. The real estate industry ended up with an even more generous depreciation timeline allowing owners to shelter more income. This was from the tax breaks that were passed by the Trump administration and his cronies. You know, it says, "In a break from previous practice, rental and mortgage interest income qualifies for a lower tax rate, the kind of special treatment traditionally reserved for long-term capital gains and certain qualified dividends." These industries, actually, with people like the Mark, they actually are going to get even a bigger return on investment than that 17%. We should have analyzed that. People will put this property and whatever development that they are actually going to be doing, like maybe the 550 units up over at the Sears, or maybe in the downtown, and they will get a bigger tax write-off. So I do think you need to send that portion certainly back to the Planning Commission, because that requires analysis. We created a vehicle with the AUD to enrich some landowners and developers, and the tax breaks made them even wealthier in many cases. I would urge you today to actually choose to have a cutoff end date as of today. If you don't have a building permit today, you are going to be packaged in with everybody else and get that 10% plus inclusionary. Make it the highest that you can actually choose today. So if it's 12.5%, if it's 14.5% in each of the zones, make it the highest today, until you guys rework everything. And that's the same thing with impact fees. Base it off of the zone. Base it of the highest amount that you can get. Then go ahead and send it back to the Planning Commission, and have them think about these things. One, don't remove the trial. Keep that going. Fix the program. Two, add a local preference. Require a pro forma be required on penalty of perjury to be submitted with these applications. Don't allow any destruction of affordable housing, because we need every single unit that we've got, and we're destroying a lot of affordable housing. The lot line adjustments right now for some projects, they look like a gerrymandered congressional district, and they shouldn't. Mechanical parking lifts... Well, do you know, you guys passed an ordinance last year, and now people with current AUD's developments in the pipeline, they not only want to have the market rate housing, but they want to use the mechanical lifts to even further reduce their parking, you know, requirements for land. Why are we doing that unless we're actually requiring those units to be affordable? Because this whole thing was about, "The land is so expensive, we cannot provide parking. We need parking reductions," and you guys just gave them a huge windfall. By the way, at the ABR a few weeks ago, last week I think it was, 533 East Mitchell Terrain, it came in. That's, you know, an eight-unit AUD project, so people are still moving forward. You know, there are a whole bunch of other things that you could do. You know, one would be, if someone develops something, and they want to sell it, like the Mark did, within two years, why don't we actually have a requirement that they need to sell it to the city at an agreed-upon price? Have someone come in and appraise it? And then take that and turn it into a collective... a cooperative, excuse me, and turn it into housing that is going to be affordable for people to purchase and live here, and make a local press conference required. I mean, there's a lot of things that you can do, but make those three...
Your time is up. Thank you so much.
Those three decisions today. Thank you.
Is Mr. Hurley come back? So his slip said he supports sending it back to the Planning Commission. Mathias Esterbrook just said he supports the staff recommendation. So that closes public comment, and I'll start with a question to Mr. Casey. So the end of the trial period, when it got to 250 units, where are we? Are we close to 250? Is that a fair question here? And, okay, staff.
Yes, Madam Mayor. So we estimate, and although there are a lot of variables in this estimation that we can't, like, depend on, like, construction costs changing, and timeline of the project being delayed for other things, like financing, but we estimate fall of 2020.
Okay. So we're not anywhere near the 250 unit, even though the cap does seem to be influencing the market? Is that correct?
If we look at the applications that have come in, and I'm just going to turn to my stats so I get them right.
Please do.
So in 2017, as far as applications... Okay, I can't find it. The applications have gone down. So this year, we have had three project applications, and the first year, we had many more. And then last year, it had gone down from the first year. Is that because of the trial period? We've heard a lot of public comment that that is yes.
Okay. So would you put the recommendations back up on the screen, please? And this might guide our discussion at this point. So sequel findings, amending the ordinance, the money. They worked a little harder than they thought they would. And it's... What we're talking about here is the recommendation of 10%. 10 units or more. $25 per square foot for projects fewer than 10 units. I would suggest if we're talking, let's talk about removing the cap and making AUD. If you feel like talking about that today, I think that's an important item. Oh, and whether to send it back to the Planning Commission. So I'm trying to help us form our thoughts here. Mr. Friedman, you're first.
I have one question. Under the proposed staff recommendation on the 10 or less, or less than 10, it's an in-lief fee only, and based on my understanding from reading the report today, that they pay the in-lief fee, but they wouldn't have the option of putting in an affordable unit?
Through the mayor, Councilman Friedman, that is correct. But this was something we also heard through public comment and have discussed with the city attorney, and it would be amicable to changing if that's a policy decision that you'd like to make.
Okay. I would support giving... support that option, especially in light of some of the comments that we heard today about it making even less likely for smaller projects if they had to do the fee rather... and the goal is to build the units, and if we have a developer that wants to put one out of seven, or eight, or whatever it is, then that's a laudable goal. So I'd like to ultimately go with that. So first, I would like to thank the Planning Commission for all your work, and I understand where you're coming from on looking at this as a whole. I share a lot of your concerns, and I also share the concern that if we start adding, you know, an affordable, and then we start adding other fees, or it makes the project infeasible to get the type of housing we need. Unfortunately, I think we're at the point now where we have studied this, and we do need to take an action on the inclusionary. And one thing I do want to show, in terms of what that percentage is, if... Macor, you can put this up for just a second. This is a slide that comes from the Kaiser-Marston Study, the previous one, that is found on our December 4 agenda from last year. And it came out of the study, and it's just something I noticed, and I think it's relevant to the discussion we had today, is if you... and this item's been brought up many times, that if you look at the AUD, especially the high-priority overlay, for every 100 new jobs or units, it's 25 new workers to support that. And that's been made as why this program's a failure. But this is basically an Excel spreadsheet, so just keep going over to the right, and the lower the density, the more extra units are going to be made to support that, till you get all the way to the right, where it's medium-high density for sale. You need 48.5 new units to support that, rather than the 25.7. That's relevant to today's discussion, because if we make it more difficult for developers to want to go into the rental AUD projects, and instead go to the... go towards the for-sale, then we're actually going to be exacerbating the housing program. And that's why if we go to 15% rather than 10%, I have a feeling there might be some of my colleagues that might advocate for the 15%. You're going to make it more likely that any project that gets built is actually going to exacerbate the number of extradition. And it says it right there, 25 to 48. At least, that's my taking of it. So I would also say that there are some that say this program's been a failure. It hasn't met the goals of the moderate workforce, but again, we're also... for 40 years, we built zero rental units. To me, that's an even greater failure, and I don't see where people were for 40 years up here saying, "Why aren't we building rental units?" Some were here, but not like they are now on this program. So I think the inclusionary is a good step to ensuring that we have at least a process to get some of that missing middle that's coming in. And I also want to say in terms of... I guess you can take that away now, so we could kind of go back to the recommendations, but I just wanted to point that out. So I'm going to be supporting the 10% inclusionary, the $25 in-lief fee, and that projects less than 10 have the ability to put the unit in if they so desire. And it is important to remember that the AUD, and it was mentioned today, itself was an incentive. And I would also like to say that when we have a joint PC council meeting, a lot of times what we do is we look at all the issues that are affecting us. I think AUD, we should have a meeting with the Planning Commission just on the AUD, in particular, the extension, because we heard today that if the AUD program were to go away, it could have drastic implications on our ability to meet our regional housing need assessment numbers, which could have other implications in terms of our parks, in terms of other grants that we're getting for homelessness. The governor has said, "If you're not meeting your numbers, then take away the gas tax." So there's a lot more at play here than just the housing itself. So that I would separately, not part of the motion, but just my opinion, is that we should focus on a Planning Commission and council meeting just on the AUD project, so we can try to address the larger issues that the Planning Commission has rightfully brought forward and look at it comprehensively. So with that, I'm going to move the staff recommendation with the change that 10 units, under 10 units, can also build an affordable unit if they desire.
Okay. And that was a second for Ms. Sneddon, off her mic. But so are you saying have the meeting with the Planning Commission in lieu of giving them... sending the rest of the questions back to them?
I don't support sending it back. I think, you know, we studied this, and there's time to study it. It's been studied. There's always going to be new questions, and now it's time to act. So I'm not supporting sending this back to the Planning Commission.
Okay. Understood. Mr. Dominguez, then Mr. Rouse.
So I have a couple of questions before I jump into comments. What is the feasibility of, inside the CBD, if we up the density, did that get studied? If I understand right, you had... and this is Slide 21, it's all yellowed out because of the low density of the medium-high that's within the CBD? Did you take a look at what would happen if we went up to the 63?
We did. So the priority overlay project, basically, in our analysis assumes that... I mentioned a $6 million land cost. That's the land cost, 6 million per acre. That's the land cost that we used for that priority overlay analysis. And so in effect, it's showing that, yeah, that type of a project would work with those higher land costs that you see in the area of the Central Business District.
Okay. So if we, what we colloquially say, fill in the donut with the high density, then it would work?
Yeah. That's what it looks like.
And so is our ordinance worded such that if we end up coming back with Phase 57 filling in the donut hole, that it would automatically change the inclusionary status of those units, of someone building then within that?
Looks like Mr. Gullett has a response.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez. The inclusionary is just a... it's a blanket requirement. So it would apply to medium-high inside the CBD as well. So we're not seeing projects being built in medium-high inside the CBD now, and we don't expect to with the inclusionary requirement.
So...
Yeah.
Can I jump in?
Sure.
So Phase 2 is looking at housing on State Street and downtown. Is that when we would address whether to include inclusionary housing then?
That... well, this ordinance would require inclusionary housing with new AUD projects. So what we're looking at in Phase 2 is changing the density, so we would allow more density. So instead of being medium-high inside the CBD, it would become priority overlay inside the CBD, and then you would have feasible projects that would be larger downtown.
And it would be feasible with a 10%?
Correct.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Dominguez. Sorry.
And I wish we would have moved there faster. I think I made that motion last... a year ago, February, and it's just taken a while. But what I want to see is a lower inclusionary rate within the donut hole, because that's where I'd like to see us really incentivize housing. And I don't know if there's anything that my colleagues are willing to do to move that in that direction today, or if we come back to it when we deal with...
I'm going to make a note.
...the filling in the donut hole in Phase, whatever Phase that ends up being. So that's my concern, is that we have... I want a greater incentive inside the donut hole to get that housing that everyone seems to agree is beneficial on State Street to bring more people in. And what I'd like to see is 15% in the other areas, and then 10% or less in the donut hole, or improvements. But it doesn't look like we're going to discuss improvements today. So that was the question I had. So now my comments. So I don't think the AUD is working if the goal is actually to reduce rent. If the goal is just to build units willy-nilly, then it probably is working. I think the AUD was premised on good principles back when it was passed, because back then the economy was moving slowly, or it was in a recession. But we've had years of growth. We've had housing problems because of these very tragic disasters in California that have made labor costs go up, and we have higher costs because of the longer delays that are probably associated... of the, the longer delays that are probably associated with the spike of development in Santa Barbara. And I'm not for delaying it, I'm looking at a article from 2016 in The Independent, the title is, "Has Housing Experiment Created a Monster? City Leaders Gasp at 36 High-Density Projects in the Pipeline." So we've, we've been kind of sitting on this for three years, and the reason we're at where we are today is because we created a housing task force. The mayor was on the task force, former council member Bendy White, and then in the audience, Planning Commissioner Sheila Lodge, I think Planning Commissioner Michael Jordan, Don Olson, and then, was it John Companella?
Companella, yeah.
Planning Commissioner Companella was also on. And so staff did a tremendous job supporting the housing task force and bringing us all of these phases. Mickey Flax, the eighth member of the task force, brought us suggestions at every meeting that most of those, I think, got incorporated at one level or another, so thank you as The problem is, we're building housing that's making the problem worse. We put a big building on State Street, we underparked it, the residents are all very high-income, so they're not participating in public transportation, they're not taking, they're not riding their bikes down State Street, so what they're doing is clogging the transportation lanes, they're making bus riders' lives more difficult, they're making the buses harder to manage, they're too close for car pools or employee shuttles.
Are you talking about the Mark?
Well, I didn't want to mention it out by name, but yes.
Okay, it's fine.
And, and they sold that, it was an out-of-town company that built it, developed it, and sold it for a huge profit. So there wasn't much of a benefit to the community, again, unless your goal is to increase the population of Santa Barbara, which I don't think most people, for that goal alone, are that excited. So the AUD, the idea was, it was a huge giveaway to incentivize this building when the economy was on its last legs. Things are different now. So looking at our role for the residents of Santa Barbara, we have a great housing policy for upper-income residents in R1s and R2s. There hasn't been a cry for changes to that area of our economy and our residents. However, what we need to do is protect working-class families, and we need to help middle-class families. The economy and this policy has served to push out middle-class families. While it increases the demand for jobs in that area, there's more jobs that have been created, as the, the slide that Councilmember Friedman put up there shows, these housing units create jobs, which creates demand for housing. And at the same time, we've actually decreased the supply for housing units for those folks. So demand goes up, supply goes down, and you remember from Econ 101, that has a instant upward pressure dramatically of prices of housing. And so this is why we're trying to do this today. The other goals we're trying to do as a city is resiliency and sustainability. This is the city where Earth Day was founded. We want to create communities that have good environments, clean air, clean water, where people can walk, bike, take fossil-free transportation to get to the places they need to get. We'd ideally love to have 10-block neighborhoods where you can walk or bike anywhere you needed to go, didn't have to jump into a fossil-fuel car. And these projects under the AUD are not moving in that direction. So we can't continue to promote housing that doesn't have a purpose willy-nilly, we have to focus on resiliency and sustainability. We've seen development, too much of which is environmentally damaging, and too much of it is going into the east side, where you already have high density, and we're not increasing the amenities to the residents in these neighborhoods. They're facing increased traffic, increased pedestrian injuries and risks, increased air pollution. For anyone who's building or rebuilding, I think the second thing we need to focus on is how do we get people through the system faster? Whether you're part of the AUD, not part of the AUD, whether you're low-density or high-density, what we want to do is get people through the system faster, and we've, we've made some changes in community development, and through this budget process, which we're going to see end pretty soon, we've created some pathways to make things go faster, and we need to double down on those. If, if you want cheaper housing and cheaper costs, and you want people to build in Santa Barbara, we need to really give them a much faster pipeline. Planning Commissioner Lodge is right, we should have adopted this a year ago, if not earlier. I want to thank Alejandra Melgoza, who's been a pillar for her community and not wavering. She's been attending meetings, CAZ and SB Can, you know, I think you're right, the 15%. And if we need to adjust height restrictions, parking setbacks, in order to do that final push to get from 4.9 to 5%, I think we can, we can do that. Professor Flax asked, "How many units will, will be built?" Well, that's the ultimate question and what we need to think about. If we're only looking at three or four of these mega-units being built or started in the next year, what are we looking at? 30 moderate-income units? I mean, this is what we're looking at, is these middle units. You know, if we'd have done this three years ago, maybe we would have had closer to a river, now we're, we're not even going to get a stream, we're going to get a trickle. So that number that was four, four units out of the thousands that are being built, may become 34. And again, that won't be the poorest unit, that's going to be the moderate units. San Jose, San Francisco, Alameda County, Santa Monica, they've all adopted inclusionary housing. In fact, they had it before, Santa Monica tried to go up to 30%. So I think we're with 10%, that's pretty low. And for anyone up here who's really been pushing for increasing affordable housing, I think we should start with 15%, lower it inside the, the Central Business District.
Okay, so you like 15, what about the 25 per square foot?
I'm okay with that.
And the motion also includes the ability to add a unit under 10 units. I'm trying to focus you on the motion.
And I'm sorry, what is, can you explain the part about add a unit?
Can the clerk read that back, so we get that absolutely right?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, the ordinance as drafted would not allow projects with 10 or fewer units to construct an affordable unit, they would have to ban in-Lu fee. The motion was to make it permissible so they could build, should they wish.
I'm in favor of that.
So that's a yes on that part? Okay, was that all the motion? I think so. Okay, very good.
And then the other question I had is regarding the date this would kick in. The housing task force, you know, and I mentioned all the people in the room who worked on that, had voted on a date that this would kick in. Do you guys have the date? I didn't see it in the agenda report.
I am not aware of a date that the housing task force spoke about, but what we have built into the ordinance itself is that after the second reading, you have 30 days before the ordinance becomes effective, and that's for projects that have not been deemed complete in the AUD pipeline.
So I would want to push it back to the task force date, and I think we even talked as a task force about having community development let applicants know that this was pending, and there was supposed to be a notice generated. I don't know if that ever was executed or not, but I'd like to go back to that task force date. And I want to think it was around September 2017, so I'll just pick that, September 1st, 2017, as the date this would kick in.
Okay.
So I don't know, in order to do that, if I need to make a friendly amendment, but I'll hold off until I hear what other people have to say.
Yeah.
And again, the reason I wanted to go back to the date we chose as a task force was, one, because we chose it as a task force, and that was when people were considering it, and two, this would prevent it from just being a trickle, where we go to all this work just to get 20, 30 units.
Very good. Mr. Rouse, you're next.
I don't know, Mr. Dominguez kind of wore me out there, let's see if I got energy left.
Yeah.
You know, I've been around for, long enough to be, have been around for the, it's always been a housing crisis, as I recall. We had down zoning, we had, what, water moratorium, variable density, every turn that we've made, whether it's a transit program, whatever we've done, good efforts, but they haven't always come up with the results we've wanted. And what we did, finally with AUD, just a few years back, was we managed to get, for the first time in many, many, many decades, rental housing units built. And they got built at a pace and a style that maybe we didn't anticipate, maybe we pushed it out a little too fast, which we do sometimes with our housing policies. And one of our wake-up calls was after Arlington Village was built, we realized that there's a lot of three, two- and three-unit bedroom units that had one parking space, and we were going to impact a very already-impacted neighborhood. So we, we tapped the brakes a little bit with that, we did that. As I sit up here and listen to everybody now, even though I think we've all kind of agreed that 10% would be acceptable, we're also niggling about the details still. And I believe that Chair Wiskom and the League of Women Voters and the Housing Authority put compelling arguments together to let the Planning Commission take another bite at this, even if it's a small, short bite, because there's a lot of stuff that, the market itself is not a dirty word. The private sector is who we're depending on to build these things. And whether or not you think a profit's appropriate or not, I got to tell you, a banker's going to look at whether or not a project's feasible, and it gets done, but just, I think the gentleman from Kaiser-Marston mentioned, it doesn't take much to, to move the needle slightly lower, and all of a sudden you're out of the feasibility where a banker's going to finance it. So all of a sudden, we will have lost another effort to continue a project or a program that we think is going to at least increase inventory. The market itself, I don't know. I mean, 10%, so you build 250, you get 25 units, great. But, and that's fine, I think we, I think there's consensus for that. But let's not go forward and make something so onerous that everybody who's ever been a contractor, taken a risk, or went to a bank for a loan's going to say, "That's it, we're not going to do that." I mean, maybe there will be people, I don't know, I'm not the expert, but on the Planning Commission, we have land-use experts, we have contractors, we have people that understand this stuff, we have the time and we have the energy to do this correctly, not quickly. Yeah, not quickly, I'm sorry, not quickly, but maybe this time correctly. We've done too many things precipitously that are going to cause problems in the end. So I'm going to make a substitute motion, Madam Mayor, that we do remand this back to the Planning Commission, to look at the items that they requested to look at, and come back to us in a, as short an order as possible. I believe they have an open schedule, and I would like to do that.
Well, my suggestion was going to be that that be the second motion, the Planning, the Planning Commission question, and that we do this first part, the, the motion that's on the floor. You don't want to vote, you don't want to vote on the motion that's on the floor now?
I do not, Madam Mayor, because there are things in that motion that the Planning Commission was going to question and look at further, and I think that's appropriate. So I would, I would make this a substitute motion.
Is there a second to that substitute motion? Okay, Mr. Rouse, good try. Will you vote on it now, or you're going to vote no on, on this?
Yeah, I don't think we're
Your colleagues are wanting to, you know?
My, our colleagues are wanting to leave the in-Lu fee as it is. We've heard, I think, adequate testimony why it isn't appropriate the way it is, and I don't know why we can't look at it. I, I
Okay, so you're
You guys are, confuse me once again.
Okay, thanks, thanks so much. Mr. or Ms. Harmon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I'll start by saying I appreciate the Planning Commission's perspective on this in particular. I understand and appreciate that you are trying to take a holistic view of this, and I think we can certainly all appreciate that there are a lot of moving parts, and it is no easy feat to craft housing policy that is effective and that accomplishes the goals that, that we all share. That said, I think that we've heard from the community, I've certainly heard from my neighbors, that this inclusionary piece is needed now. So what I would like to see, actually, is for us to perhaps shift our perspective a little bit, and to think about the inclusionary, whatever percentage we end up setting it at, as the cornerstone of the AUD policy, a cornerstone of our, our housing policy, and have that be the foundation from which we work, and, and have that really be the backbone of whatever it is that we decide. So to Councilmember Rouse's motion, what I would love to see today is for us to vote on the inclusionary ordinance, but perhaps we can send it back to Planning Commission to discuss some of the other ancillary issues, but saying to them, you know, "This is on the books, so let's craft an ordinance that works," understanding that this is the heart of our community, that we have to stand up for working families, but, you know, we understand that, you know, developers have their needs as well, so maybe you can look at some of these other issues and, and talk about how you can make that work with this priority that we've set, and come back in a month, or however long might be appropriate. So I think the, the difference here is that, Councilmember Rouse, you said, "Send the whole thing back," and I, I'm not comfortable with that, because I really think that we need to stand up for what it is that we want to say on inclusionary today. Now, if we want to send back the other menu of options and say, "Please return with greater detail about how you can make this work, how you see it working in light of our inclusionary priority," I, I, that, to me, is a reasonable compromise, and something that I would be willing to support.
Just to point of clarity on that, I did say we had consensus on the 10%, so
Excuse me.
That was kind of the, kind of the same motion.
But, yeah, but I, I want to, the difference is, I want to vote on this today. I think it's important that we do make that, so.
We will vote on it today. So, so you support the motion is what's on the screen, and the part that Mr. Friedman added, that the developer with 10 units or fewer, or fewer than 10, right, so if it's 10 and above, so nine and below would have the option of building the unit and not paying the fee?
Yes, I do support that.
Okay.
Thank you.
So you're supporting the motion?
Madam Mayor, just for clarification, does that leave the in-Lu fee at $25 a square foot?
Yes, sir, it's at 25 right now. Yes. She's thinking about it.
I'll come back.
Okay. Go, go ahead.
Just to clarify the motion, the, if they build the affordable unit, well, then they wouldn't, they wouldn't be paying the fee, so I just wanted to clarify that, they wouldn't be paying the fee if they build the affordable unit.
Okay, Mr. Gutierrez, your turn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, everyone, who's shown up to voice their opinions and concerns about the matter. I, I feel like 10% is, is pretty low compared to how other cities have gone up to 25 to 30. I feel like we really need that 25% inclusionary housing. I, I agree that we're in a housing crisis, but we're also in affordability crisis, and 10% just, just doesn't seem like it's going to be making, it's not going to be helping as much as it can be. So I, I would really urge my fellow council members to go up to 15. I feel like even that's low, but it'll, it'll help out just, just even more. When we talk about how we, as a community, want to be more environmentally conscious and, and help out the environment, you know, I've proposed the idea that has been done several times about allowing the developers to build as many units as they can on these lots, as long as they only run out to people who don't own vehicles. If we want to house people here and provide housing, then we can do that, but we just got to make sure that if we're going to allow these contractors to build as much as they can safely, without holding them to building these empty spaces for vehicles, like, there's plenty of people out in our community right now that don't own vehicles, that are looking for affordable housing, and it'll just make the environment better and be able to give more people housing. So if we really want to do something that's radical, some may say, we could push for that as a stipulation in the, the AUD program, so I'm not really sure if
I think you're not supporting the motion.
Only because it's not enough, not because
Understood.
Yeah.
Okay, so my comments are that, you can go next, Ms. Sneddon. So I'll be supporting the motion as it is, with all due respect to the people who want it, who want the inclusionary rate to be higher. Thank you, I get, I get where you're coming from, I think, I think we need to put this forward. I liked Mayor Protem Friedman's addition, and I think we can talk about the PC after we take this vote. And I'm counting four votes, Ms. Sneddon, if you seconded the motion, you must be supportive of 10%. So Mr. Rouse had his, had his light on before you, but he already talked, okay, Ms. Sneddon first. Okay.
I, I, I did support the motion, I do support the motion and do support as, as it is. I was interested also in Councilmember Dominguez's suggestion, possibly of 15% outside of the Central Business District, so I, I would be in favor of that if there was other will, but otherwise, I will be supporting the motion as it's described.
Mr. Casey?
Just as you continue deliberation, this is a land-use item. Per the charter, it requires five votes. It takes four votes to introduce it, but it will take a fifth vote to get it adopted. So you can introduce it today on four votes, but just so you realize, it ultimately does require five votes to implement.
And Madam Mayor, actually, while, while we're talking about it procedurally, if the
the council does go towards allowing projects with 10 or fewer to build rather than simply pay, I'd like, you can take a vote on it today, but we'll bring it back for introduction with that language drafted for you and the community to read.
Well, it doesn't make sense, if only four of us want it now, to go, send you to go do that and then come back. So, Mr. Rouse, you might just get your wish. If we don't have five votes today, I, maybe we should send it back to the Planning Commission.
Well, I have no wish to, to delay or impede, and I think we do agree on the 10 percent. I think that's a consensus, we like to forward that.
Say that, say that again, I'm sorry.
What?
Say that again.
Well, we agree, we, I think there's a consensus about 10 percent. I think, I think all sides have agreed. I think going forward, I would like to listen to the people who actually do this for a living, as well as the people who do land use planning for a living, who say, "And, our Housing Authority, by the way, who may have questioned the amount of $25 in-lufy, why punish the private sector on whom we depend to do this stuff, to build this stuff, to finance it? Why, we've, we've been overly successful in, in these AUD projects so far, to the point where it kind of frightened us. You know, we got a bunch in the pipeline in a hurry. So we tapped the brakes a little bit with some of the parking requirement changes. But now, if we, if we can make whatever arbitrary numbers up we want, but if it stops the process, what have you done besides make a statement? And that's what I'm afraid of. I would like to get the expertise of our land used committees that we have before we make a vote. We, we can't agree on everything up here right now. I think we're deliberating on the, on the, the little niggling parts, and we're losing some of the big picture. I would like to have the Planning, Planning Commission come back with, at the 10 percent plus their shopping list of things they wanted to discuss and put into further detail for us. I think that's a reasonable request.
I, I think we're doing pretty good. We're circling around a little bit, but, um, I, yeah, I, I'm not supportive of 10 percent in one area and 15 in another. I, I, so I, you know, and I'm thinking, we really, if we don't have five solid votes going forward, then we need to do something differently. So, Mr. Dominguez, and then Mr. Gutierrez, to the motion?
So I'm gonna make the substitute motion of 15 percent, except for the CBD, which would be 10 percent, and including the Friedman Amendment with the one unit within the 10, or nine or less. So do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Gutierrez. So 10 percent CBD, 15 percent everywhere else, with the lower than 10 percent thing. Okay. To that motion, that's a substitute motion. Mr. Friedman, what are your thoughts?
I'm not gonna be supporting it again. The 15 percent, as we heard, would most likely even further make it so that it would disincentivize this. I would ask Councilman Gutierrez, I understand you want more, but you were talking 25, 30, but the state legislation allows up to 15, so we're not even able to go above 15. We seem to have a consensus of four. You'd be the fifth, so I would just ask if you would support the motion on the, the original motion to allow us to move forward on it.
Your lights on, Mr. Gutierrez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I believe most of us were at the Econo, UCSB Economic Forecast, and our top economist at UCSB, Dr. Peter Rupert, he showed us the stats that, that show that the housing market in Santa Barbara is only going up. So to try to, try to claim that, that it's infeasible for 15 percent, I mean, it doesn't really add up to these numbers. These aren't arbitrary, these are, these are numbers, this is data from our top economist. So 15 percent is reasonable for our people. Thanks.
Okay, so let's go ahead and vote on the substitute motion. Would you read it, Ms. Clerk, if you caught it?
Yes, Madam Mayor, although I, I do have a question to the maker of the motion. Is it 10 percent within the CBD, 15 percent outside of it? Okay.
And that if it's a project nine or fewer, they can build or pay the fee, right?
Yes.
It'll be optional?
Yes.
That's how it'll work?
Let, if I can, Madam Mayor, if I can give a stab at reading the whole motion back here.
Please do.
A substitute motion by Councilmember Dominguez, seconded by Councilmember Gutierrez, for the staff recommendation, but 10 percent, I'm sorry, 15 percent within the CBD, 10 percent, I'm sorry, 10 percent within the CBD, 15 percent outside the CBD, meaning the Central Business District, with the amendment suggested by Mayor Protem Friedman to permit changes, to permit projects fewer than 10 units to have the option to build a unit or pay the in-lufy.
Okay. And to the motion, I won't be voting for that. It was pretty clear in the analysis that 15 percent won't work. I think it'll, it'll, it just, no one will come forward with projects at that high of a rate. So I'll be voting no, and if there's not any other comments, we'll go ahead and do a, a roll call vote, Ms. Clerk.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to comment, it was my understanding, I just, and I respect, of course, your right to vote no, but seemed like the economist was saying it's a difference of 4.9 versus 5 percent, doing the 15 percent.
We've had people question their numbers anyway. No offense to you, Mr. Dozma, but, yeah. Dozma.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Friedman?
No.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
Councilmember Rouse?
Yeah.
Councilmember Sneddon?
Yes.
And Mayor Maria?
No. So that was four to three?
Four to three with the no votes from Mayor Protem Friedman, Councilmember Rouse, and Mayor Maria.
Okay. So where do we go from here, Mr.?
You're done on the item for today. You've passed a motion with a majority vote to introduce the ordinance. Actually, we'll need to bring it back for introduction, and so...
But when we come back for the vote, it has to be five of us.
Excuse me, let me finish, if you don't mind.
I'm sorry.
So I think we mentioned that we will need to return with a redrafted ordinance with the changes that were made, so everyone can see it. That introduction, again, will require four votes for introduction, but ultimately, you will need five votes for adoption, and so when we get to the day of adoption, if there's not five votes, the ordinance won't be adopted.
Okay.
And, Madam Mayor, if I might, I wanna be very clear about this. I'm going to want to be very confident that the business district addition was within the scope of what was reviewed by the Planning Commission, to make sure we have procedurally complied with the state planning and zoning law, so, meaning, you should, within some reasonable bound, reasonable boundaries, limit your discussion to what you've gotten recommendations on. It's not a tight, precise rule, there's some generality there, but I'm, I'm mentioning it, mentioning it because I do wanna look at that issue. Anytime that the recommendation goes in a different direction than what the Planning Commission has considered, it's an issue that we look at to make sure that we're procedurally accurate.
Okay. So, Mr. Casey, is it worth me opening the question about sending anything to the Planning Commission at this point, in your wisdom, sir?
Well, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, it depends on what you mean. You've already sent, you know, the Phase Two package of items to the Planning Commission. I believe staff's already working on that. So I'm not sure exactly what it is you're talking about wanting to send to the Planning Commission, so I'd need a little more clarification on that.
Okay. Well, there's some lights on, so people have closing remarks. Mr. Dominguez, Ms. Sneddon, Ms. Harmon?
So I have an idea that might kill two birds with one stone, and the two birds are maybe getting a fifth vote from someone who might see this amendment as, as positive, and then dealing with the legal issue of not having the CBD included. What would happen, Mr. Klon, if we had the second option to come back with the mo, with the ordinance drafted so that there's no inclusionary in the CBD, because that's what the ordinance says now? And I, I think that's beneficial for two reasons. One, it increases the incentive downtown, and, and I think staff, what are our AUD numbers on Chapala and Ana Cap? I think they're pretty anemic. And I think that's area where we have parking lots that could be used to incentivize further downtown residential development. So, Mr. Klon, how could I change, or how could, what could you bring back if you go do the research and determine that this motion as passed would have to go to Planning Commission? What would be an alternative you could bring back, saying, "On the other hand, if you left CBD alone, which means zero inclusionary requirement, that we could approve at a first reading next week"?
It, it would be, um... I have two concerns. So certainly, we could bring, you could introduce today 15 percent citywide. The provision allowing nine or fewer to build rather than paying in-lufy is a closer call in terms of whether we could affect it today. I think it's fairly safe simply to delete that section and modify the one above it. So, Councilmember Dominguez, if the council wished to introduce formally an ordinance today, you could do so with the 15 percent or 10, not involving the Central Business District, and I, I, I think you could go ahead and introduce with the provision that nine or fewer may build as well as pay. If we run into massive drafting changes, I'd let you know that when we came back, but I think it's fairly surgical. I just, I hate to edit an ordinance like that on the fly if it implicates other issues that the public isn't aware of from your discussion. So that's why I have to hedge my bets on how far you can go today.
Can you just encapsulate what you're suggesting? You...
Well, I guess it would depend if any of the no votes would be interested in switching their vote to yes if we remove the inclusionary requirement in the CBD.
To 0 percent? Hmm. And 15 percent citywide? Hmm. Okay. And he just gave us the legal opinion on the nine or fewer. Okay. Okay, I'm getting it. More lights are on. Ms. Sneddon, Ms. Harmon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a question. I, I wasn't clear if Councilmember Dominguez's motion was a substitute motion, and we still then hadn't voted on the original motion?
We approved the substitute motion four to three, and so that negated the original motion. Yeah. Got that right?
So if someone could repeat for me what, what is going to be in the ordinance that comes back to us, just what will be coming?
Okay. The, the main motion came from Councilmember Friedman, and was the staff recommendation plus a, a request to modify the ordinance to allow developments with nine or fewer units to build as well as paying in-lufy. Councilmember Rouse attempted a substitute motion to remand back to the Planning Commission, that died for lack of a second. Councilmember Dominguez made a substitute motion, which is, for the public, a substitute motion is simply an amendment that has the effect of dramatically reversing the course of the original motion, or the main motion. So Councilmember Dominguez's substitute motion was to require 15 percent inclusionary, except in the Central Business District where it would be 10 percent, and also carried forward the same concept that Councilmember Friedman introduced, namely that fewer, nine or fewer projects could build or pay. That motion carried four, three. So when we return, what you would get for introduction at first reading again is that ordinance. That would be a four-person vote, and then what Mr. Casey said is correct, to adopt that ordinance at second reading a week later would take five votes.
Thank you.
Okay. So you're good. Ms. Harmon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To the point that I made earlier about giving direction to Planning Commission specifically, I, I appreciate that there's some confusion about what it is that they might be doing, but it seems that there's enough moving pieces, and it's complicated enough when we're talking about what it is that we're trying to develop and encourage, that it makes sense to give direction to Planning Commission, to think creatively about how this ordinance might need to be revised, and what ways to make this work. I mean, I, I, I think that that's a good idea. I think that's what we've tasked them with in general. I believe that they're up to the task to making this work. I believe they have the expertise to understand how we can adjust the ordinance such that it meets the needs of our community and meets the needs of the folks that are going to be coming forward, putting projects in the pipeline. So, you know, I understand that, you know, perhaps we can't be totally specific with what we want Planning Commission to look at, but frankly, they're the experts, I'm not, so I, I really couldn't give them specific direction, but I, if there's interest from my colleagues, I would like to perhaps make that motion, that we ask Planning Commission to look at the ordinance in general, to look at some of these recommendations that they made in light of what we now have voted on, and to get back to us in a reasonable period of time, two months. I mean, we can ask Planning Commission so that this works.
I, I, I think I asked Mr. Casey that question, is there any sense now sending it back to Planning Commission? Did I hear you correctly that they're already getting some of the other questions, and that doing anything now would not be fruitful?
No, Madam Mayor and councilmembers, I think what you heard me say is I've heard a number of you say different things about what you would like to have the Planning Commission be involved in. Some didn't wanna act today and wanted to send it to Planning Commission. Others, like Councilwoman Harmon, just said she wants to act today and adopt an ordinance, but still let the Planning Commission look at it, and if they wanna make any adjustments to that, recommend that to come back and possibly amend the ordinance with that input. So I'm hearing different things, and so I'm looking for some general majority guidance from council about what it is you would like council to do.
Well, she made it a motion, and I heard a quiet second from Councilmember Sneddon. So, so now we have that motion on the floor, is now to send the matter to the Planning Commission. Okay? So the other lights I have on are Mr. Rouse, and Mr. Friedman, and Ms. Sneddon. So, Mr. Rouse, what do you think of this new motion?
Oh, super. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank my colleagues for kind of proving my point about sending things back to the Planning Commission in the first place.
Okay.
Now, we're gonna hand it back to them, which I, I will support the motion, but saying, you know, somehow to entice the private sector to hang in now is going to be really interesting. So we may not have to talk, we may not have to talk about the deadline for the AUD or whether or not it's going to expire. It may have. But I will be supporting the motion.
Okay, Mr. Friedman, what about you?
I'm gonna ask my colleagues, who voted in the majority on the substitute motion, to reconsider and send the entire thing, like Councilmember Rouse said, back to the Planning Commission. I don't think it's very, it pigeonholes them to have a 15 percent that they are gonna have to somehow respond to, that there's not five votes up here. So Councilmember Rouse kinda saw, and I both saw where this was going. We both tried to head it off in a different way. I tried to get an ordinance that could get us there, you tried to get it back to Planning Commission. So I can't do a substitute motion on it because it's a different one, so I'm going to ask one of my colleagues, who voted in the majority, to reconsider your vote, and then we take a second vote and send the entire thing back to the Planning Commission, like Councilmember Rouse suggested. Otherwise, I don't think we're gonna have the votes to get to a 15 percent inclusionary ordinance.
Well, I need to ask my parliamentarian for some help at this point. So we took a vote, and now we have a second vote. Mr. Friedman's trying to get at undoing the first vote, and I don't know how to get there.
He, he's requesting someone who has the authority, namely someone who voted with the four-member majority, to make a motion to reconsider that vote.
Okay. Do we need to vote on the motion on the floor about sending things to the Planning Commission?
I missed a second on that motion, I'm sorry. Okay, there was a second.
It was a second.
Yes, that motion has precedence. If the, the substitute motion is, is it directed to...
Can I make a substitute motion, ask someone to make reconsideration of a previous vote we already took? I don't think you could do that.
No, you can't.
So the only way to accomplish that would be if...
You're requesting one of your colleagues who voted in the majority, that's...
If one of the two who made this motion removed that motion, and then reconsidered the original motion, and then... the original motion, and then we could send the whole thing back to Planning Commission. Because again, they're the experts. I'd hate for them to have to look at this whole thing, and they come to the conclusion that it's a 10%, and we've already voted on a 15%. I don't know if that makes sense to anybody here, but we're pigeonholing what the Planning Commission would be able to reconsider. My opinion is, they reconsider everything, or we go with the original motion. The only way to get there is to withdraw the current motion and reconsider the vote that we already took. And then make another motion to send it back to Planning Commission.
So who is... Who were the four people who voted yes?
Madam Mayor, there is a motion on the floor now that needs to be addressed.
Okay. So that's... Okay. So we need to take a vote on that motion because it doesn't seem like the maker of the motion is withdrawing it. Okay. So, right. So would you do a roll call vote? Go ahead, Ms. Sned.
I'm sorry, I still have a discussion point on the motion on the table that Councilmember Harmon made, and I seconded. Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I really want to emphasize that this is the end result of a long process where the whole package came to council. Council sent the package to Planning Commission and through staff recommendation and working together, came up with the two phases, then came back to council. Council again reaffirmed that the inclusionary piece was to be a cornerstone that the rest would move around. And Planning Commission looked at the whole package, did not make a recommendation on the inclusionary other than not to do it, and that it needed to be looked at altogether. I believe that the motion that has already been approved for consideration and has moved on holds that piece as a cornerstone that the rest of the considerations or incentives will have to move around. We're setting the message that not another AUD will be built without this inclusionary piece in place. Once it's in place, then Planning Commission would please look at the rest of the pieces and the recommendations that can come after that is in place. And that will come through Phase Two. That will come through going back to Planning Commission. I very much welcome the input of the Planning Commission. I think we all do and honor that input, but with the cornerstone of the inclusionary housing in place. So I will be supporting.
We'll still need to get to five votes when it comes down to the rubber hitting the road, so just keep that in mind. Mr. Dominguez, your lights on?
Yeah, I have a clarification question. So sending it to Planning Commission is just sending it to them after the ordinance has been brought back to us and passed. It's not delaying the ordinance. Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Casey's nodding yes.
Okay. Because people are saying, "Send the matter," and I wasn't sure if they meant en route back to us. So it would go to them after it comes back to here, after Mr. Collins had a chance to do his legal work. So the second question is, then that incorporates the September 2017...
No, it doesn't. And I think that's a... That'll be the next motion.
Okay. Thank you.
No, it didn't. We weren't even talking about that. So this... The motion now is to send the rest of the items to the Planning Commission. How did you phrase it, Ms. Harmon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess the way to phrase it is that I would like to give direction to Planning Commission to consider the ordinance in light of this direction that we've given on the inclusionary piece and to ask that they return. I would like to have a specific timeline for their return because I think it will help us... Sorry, I'm getting a field. But I direct... Ask them to consider the ordinance in light of this direction that we've given and to return to council with their recommendations for the full ordinance on some reasonable timeline, two months, three months, whatever it might be.
Is that what you understood the motion was, Ms. Seconder? Wait, they're talking. Am I good?
I do understand that way, but I'm not comfortable with imposing a timeline because I think that the very outside would be when Phase Two is completed. So I wouldn't want to, again, be sort of out of step with the process, but the rest of the motion, I'm in favor.
Yeah, that's the calendar stuff, right? So, okay. Mr. Rouse, to this motion?
Yeah, Madam Mayor. I feel at this point, time has gotten so convoluted, I'm going to abstain from the vote.
Abstain, okay. Yeah. How would I vote on this? Hmm. Yeah. I think I'll send it to the Planning Commission. You guys asked for it, so... If there's no other discussion, we'll go ahead and take a roll call vote.
Madam Mayor, may I restate the motion into the record?
I'm sorry?
I'd like to restate the motion into the record. We have a motion by Councilmember Harmon, seconded by Councilmember Sneddon, to provide direction to the Planning Commission to consider the ordinance in the light of this direction on the inclusionary piece and ask that the Commission return with recommendations for the full ordinance.
Sound good?
Good.
Sound good? We'll take a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Pretem Friedman?
I'm still unclear what we're voting on, so I'm abstaining as well.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
Councilmember Rouse?
Abstain.
Councilmember Sneddon?
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Yes.
And Mayor Maria?
I... Was that five yes and two abstentions?
Correct, with the abstentions from Mayor Pretem Friedman and Councilmember Rouse.
Okay. And now the question of the starting date. I'm supportive of what staff is recommending. Ms. Metzger, what did you say? 30 days after the second reading, et cetera, et cetera?
Yes, Madam Mayor, it's on the first page of your ordinance section... Or second page of your ordinance, Section Three. And so this ordinance shall become effective 30 days after the date of its adoption. However, applications for development pursuant to the average unit size density incentive program that were submitted and deemed complete before the effective date of this ordinance may proceed in accordance with the provisions of the average unit size density incentive program that existed as the date the application was deemed complete.
Okay. So that's what's on the table. Mr. Dominguez, you want to make a...
Madam Mayor, that was what was voted upon, a four to three motion, because it was the ordinance as drafted with the changes. Now, if there's adjustments to that, I guess we can consider that. But I just want to say that was included in the draft ordinance which you forwarded.
Okay.
So I would like to make a motion to amend that to September 1 of 2017. So anything that had, using the same language regarding applications, but just changed the date from forward ahead of us back to that date because people were unnoticed, and we had a full-throated discussion on that.
So, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, the way... I believe that we can impose up until the time building permits are issued. So it would be really a two-step requirement, that the application was not complete before September of 17 and a building permit has not yet been issued.
I don't hear a second to his motion, so we'll go ahead and let that go with thanks. And I think...
Can I make a second motion then, instead, to roll it back to January 1? Because here's the problem. If we have it proactive, we're looking at it coming into effect. When would that be? As it stands now?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, it depends on when the second reading is. So until we have that scheduled, we can't give you an exact date.
Mr. Dominguez, I took...
Four or five weeks from now. Six or seven weeks from now. So you're talking about June or July? And you're saying that the AUD is probably going to expire a year from this fall? So really, you're only talking about whatever handful of people apply after July or August or who don't have their application submitted by July or August. So really, if we rolled it back a year and there's a year left, we're going to double the number of affordable units that we're going to build.
Mr. Dominguez, I took the lack of a second to mean that we were satisfied with how we had voted originally with the provision that Ms. Metzger had read related to the date of effectiveness, so...
I thought people just didn't like September. So is there zero interest in having it earlier than... Okay.
Okay. Very good. Mr. Casey, final thoughts?
Just one technical item on the recommendation. If you could go to the other slide on the final... We just had a recommendation to approve the contract amendment for the consultant work. It would be a courtesy if you could act on that, just that last bullet there. Approve the amendment to the agreement.
That was Dominguez-Rouse. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? No. We're going forward with that one. We'll close this item. Ms. Dove, you've been waiting all afternoon. We're going to take a break so you can hook up your computer, and we're on a 10-minute break. Thank you.[1237.66] Take our seats, please. It's a land use appeal. I have to wait till everybody's back. Thanks. We will reconvene this June 4th, 2019, meeting of the Santa Barbara City Council. Ms. Clerk, will you read item number 18, please, to the record?
Yes. Item 18, Appeal of Parks and Recreation Commission's Action to Conditionally Approve Removal of Nine Trees Located in the Front Yard Setback at 801 and 829 C Ranch Drive.
Thank you. So, land use appeals are a particularly serious responsibility of our city council. It's a quasi-judicial proceeding, and there are specific rules and a format. So, how it will work, the first thing is we will disclose any ex parte communications with the parties. Staff will make a presentation. We'll have remarks from a design review board representative, if appropriate. Questions from the council. A presentation by the appellate, appellant, in this case, Ms. Dove. Questions from the council. A presentation from the applicant, which I understand they won't be making one, and they're relying on the written material that is in our packets. So, the applicant is relying on, I think it's Attachment 8 in our packet, if you wanted to take a look at that. Public comment, I think we might have one or two out there. And then council deliberations. So, does anyone have ex parte communications to disclose? Okay. I did talk to the appellant about hooking up her computer. So, nothing too serious. We'll go ahead to staff presentation. Thank you.
Mayor Murillo and council members, just to start off, I wanted to mention that Kathy McGill is here from the Parks and Recreation Commission, and Bruce Reed from the Street Tree Advisory Committee, if you have questions of them. An overview, we're going to go over the tree removal and tree removal application and review process. The Street Tree Advisory Committee and the Parks and Recreation Commission's review of those applications. Going to go over appeal issues and a recommendation. We received an application from Burke Theofanos and Hammond on February 25th, 2019. The application stated that there was 10 trees. There were two pines on 801 C Ranch Drive, and two pines and six eucalyptus on 829 C Ranch Drive. The applicants are not the owners of these properties. They are neighbors of these properties. The properties at 801 and 829 are zoned A1 with a 35-foot setback. And per the municipal code, if someone wants to remove a tree within the minimum front setback, a permit is required. Section 15.24.040, the municipal code, sets the setback tree requirements for Street Tree Advisory Committee review. The committee must, may, review the considerations in 15.24.080. Those are whether the tree is designated historic or specimen, the size of the tree in relation to the lot, the number and size of other trees to remain on-site or adjacent city property, any benefits to adjacent trees expected from the removal, whether the trees were planted by the applicant or the owner at the time they were planted, and whether there's proper room for the tree canopy to grow. The committee recommendation gets provided to the Parks and Recreation Commission. The commission reviews the application materials, the report from the Street Tree Advisory Committee, and a staff presentation. They also review the considerations in 1524.080. They receive public testimony, and they make at least one of the findings in 15.24.090. Those findings are that the removal would adhere to principles of good forestry management, or a reasonable development of the property dictates removal, or that the character of the neighborhood would not be materially affected, excuse me, that the topography of the building site renders the removal desirable, or the safety of persons or property dictates the removal. We first received an application that was reviewed at the Street Tree Advisory Committee's meeting on October 4th, 2018. After that meeting, we noted that the property owners at 801 and 829 did not appear to know that the application was moving forward. After a discussion with the applicant, they withdrew that application and submitted a revised application for the March 7th, 2019 Street Tree Advisory Committee meeting. The committee reviewed those materials. They received presentations from Ms. Langsef, who lives at 801 C Ranch Drive, Mr. and Mrs. Theofamos, who are applicants in the case. They did a site visit, and the appellant was not present at that meeting. This is a photograph that shows the group of trees in question. At the time of the application, the application submitted for 10 trees. These two trees that I'm showing, ooh, right here, in the plan, turns out is actually one tree with two trunks. So, it's actually nine trees being considered for removal. Two of those at 801, which are over here, and seven at 829, one here, and the other six over here. The committee reviewed the proposal. They noted that the applicant was proposing to replace these trees with two trees that are actually on a list of invasive trees. But they did note that the proposal would not remove all the trees and denude the area. They felt that the smaller replacement trees would have a potential to achieve the existing tree height and provide the longer-term benefits so that all the trees aren't aging out at the same time. So, it would provide for age diversity, which is a sound arborical cultural practice, and preserve existing neighborhood character. They voted three to zero to recommend that the commission conditionally approve the removals on the condition that the replacement trees are not on the California Native Plant Society list of invasive trees, that they have the potential to achieve 20 to 30 feet in height, that three of the replacement trees be placed in the area of the removals at 801 C Ranch Drive, and six in the area of removals at 829 C Ranch Drive. So, to show you that, the three replacements at 801 would be in this general area, and the six replacements would be in this general area. The commission reviewed the item at their March 27th, 2019, meeting. They considered the application materials, report from the Street Tree Advisory Committee and staff, an email from Nicole Clark, who is a current chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission. They heard testimony from Ms. Langstaff, the owner of 801 C Ranch Drive, and Ms. Dove, the tenant at 829 C Ranch Drive. Parks and Recreation Commission, when they discussed the item, they did discuss the trees that would remain on the property consistent with the considerations we discussed before. They commented that there was, would be adequate tree canopy remain after the trees would be removed, and that the character of the neighbor would not be materially affected as required by one of the findings in the code. They voted four to one to conditionally approve the removals on the condition the replacement trees are not on the California Native Plant Society list of invasive trees, that they have the potential to achieve 20 to 30 feet in height, that three replacement trees be placed in the area of 801, and six replacement trees in the area of 829. We received an appeal on April 3rd, 2019, from Marilyn Dove. In the appeal, she asserts that information was relayed incorrectly regarding the number of removals and replacements, that replacement trees are not commensurate in size or number to the existing trees, that the arborist report that she provided was not available for the review by the committee, and that an email submitted by Chair Clark of the Parks and Recreation Commission indicated she was unconvinced that adequate findings for removal could be met. During the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting, staff clarified the number and location of trees to be removed and those to be replanted. The arborist report was submitted after the committee meeting so it could not be provided for them for consideration. And the replacement trees will be commensurate in size to the current stature of the trees to be removed, and the number matches the current number to be proposed for removal. So, staff would recommend that council deny the appeal filed by Ms. Dove, and uphold the Parks and Recreation Commission decision to conditionally approve the removal of 10 various trees located at 801 and 829 C Ranch Drive, which we've determined is actually nine various trees, and make one or more of the findings specified in 15.24.090 of the municipal code. And for convenience, I have those here. And that's the end of my presentation.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there questions for Mr. Downey, our arborist and staff presenter at this time? Mr. Dominguez, go ahead.
I have a question about the arborist report, and I was a little bit confused. When did it make it to the, into the process? Did it go to the STACK recommendation or the Parks and Rec Commission, or?
Mayor Murillo and Councilmember Dominguez, the staff received an email with the arborist report attached the day of the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting. So, it was provided to the Parks and Recreation Commission for their meeting. It was not available for the committee to review.
I'm confused. They received it, but it wasn't available for review?
Mayor Murillo, Councilmember Dominguez, the Street Tree Advisory Committee met and considered the tree application on March 7th. The commission meeting was on March 24th, if I have the date correct. I believe we received the arborist report on March 24th, the day of the commission meeting.
So, that's the arborist report of the appellant?
That's correct, from Mr. Bill Spiewack.
And did, there was a letter or communication from Ms. Clark, and had she seen the arborist report before her communication?
She did not.
And did she supplement that after she did see it?
It looks like Ms. McGill, when she comes up and makes her presentation, can clarify some of those questions?
Thank you.
Mayor Murillo, Councilmember Dominguez, if you don't mind.
Please.
Chair Clark was not present at the commission meeting, so she forwarded her, she sent her communication to Vice Chair Perry so it could be read. So, we don't believe she saw the report on that same day. She was not present.
At the initial date or when she sent her report? Because she was at the street tree meeting, and then she sent something to the commission, and she saw it and then sent it? Or she sent something still without seeing it? Okay.
Okay. Mr. Friedman?
I think you have a couple of questions. First one is, what is the current, the current trees that are there? What is the current status of them? There's reference in part of the staff report and some of the correspondence that the trees are all too close together, that there hasn't been adequate maintenance of the types of the trees that are there, which is problematic. And then my second one, my second question, which relates to this, is the issue of the fire department and defensible space. It seems like it's outside, but is there a defensible space? Can we look at defensible space, and would this enhance defensible space?
Mayor Murillo and Councilmember Friedman, the eucalyptus trees have all in the past been topped, which is a harmful practice. The regrowth is rapid and not attached as strongly as the original branches were. As you may have read in the arborist report, that can be resolved over time, but it requires significant maintenance and a plan to move forward how to achieve that. The arborist report also mentions the condition of the pines. None of the ones in the application are ill. The ones that do show signs of illness are outside. However, the proximity of them to each other, they are so tight that there's a lot of dead branches in the middle of the trees. So, part of the concern, and this goes to the second part of the question, was defensible space. They acknowledged that this is not in the area that is required defensible space. They asked fire department staff if, if the... They asked fire department staff if, if the, the appellant asked fire department staff if the pruning and removal work would be required in this area. Fire department staff stated that they didn't, would not require it, but they would support it because it does provide additional defensible space than what is required by the municipal code.
And then one follow-up question to that is, who is responsible for both the cost and controlling the maintenance of the eucalyptus trees to try to get them into a healthy condition? Is it the city? Is it the property owners? So?
Mayor Mario and Councilmember Friedman, the, these trees are all privately owned. The ones that exist on 801 are the responsibility of that property owner to maintain. The ones at 829 are their responsibility to maintain. If the application is successful for approval of removal, that the applicant for the tree removal request should be responsible for completing that work if they're approved.
Questions from Ms. Sneddon?
Thank you. I did attend both those meetings that happened to see this, but I'm still confused. The property owner is, was aware at the second meeting and is not in favor. Is that correct or incorrect? Because there's a tenant and there's a property owner, two property owners. Can you tell me if the two property owners are a part of this process?
Mayor Mario and Councilmember Sneddon, the, the application that was submitted, the second application, includes applications from the two owners of the property. They are in line with the request to remove trees. The tenant, Ms. Dove, who lives at 829, does not want to see the trees removed.
Thank you for that clarification.
We'll call up Ms. McGill as the representative from the Parks and Recreation Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that good?
Perfect.
I have to put it way down. Yes, thank Madam Mayor, commission members. Good evening. So I can talk a little bit about the process, our thought process, the conversation, and as much as anything, make myself available for questions. We did discuss this quite a bit, as you have seen. I would say this is an unusual street, setback tree application removal because of the different applicants, and it was complicated. It wasn't confusing at the end of the day because we asked a lot of questions. And Mr. Downey, Ms. Zachary were very forthcoming, explained everything as many times as it took. And I'd say upfront, too, we received the arborist report not, as soon as they got it, we got it, basically. I certainly read it in advance. I would imagine anybody, most everybody did. I can't speak for anybody but myself. I certainly read the arborist report. Now, Vice Chair Perry read Nicole's, Clark's letter at the end of the discussion, but the way these meetings work, we get any communications before the meeting starts. And so certainly I had read Nicole's letter well before the meeting started, and I was aware of what she was thinking. She goes to the STACK meetings, she goes to the site visits, so she's, she's got the benefit of that whole conversation. That's one of her subcommittees. So really, as we worked through the arborist report, a couple comments, and Commissioner Longstreet did make the point that there are also experts on the STACK. So it was, it was not an arborist report versus laypeople. It really was, you know, informed discussion all across the piece. Most of our questions came from that report, in the issue of are the trees diseased, are the trees not diseased, what does the canopy look like? I would say, on balance, there was not one overwhelming point that said, okay, yes, we should approve or not approve. It was a sum of parts.
Okay.
And it was, you know, it was the density of the canopy, it was the topping of the eucalyptus, it was the ability to plant with younger trees that were, that would then prove a benefit to the neighborhood as a whole and not denude it overall.
Okay.
And I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions for Ms. McGill? I don't see any, so.
Yeah, that's okay.
Thank you for those comments. So the appellant, Ms. Dove, come on up, and you'll get 20, 20 minutes. And if you don't use it all, you get to save it for the end to, if you need some, any closing remarks. So, Ms. Clark, can we change the screen so that, are you all, you ready to go?
Yeah.
Okay.
Honorable Mayor Mario and councilmembers.
Can you get nice and close to the, to the microphone? You have a soft voice.
Is this good?
Better.
I will not repeat most of the issues I raised in my appeal, which came with the documentation as to where in the video you could find them. But my assertions still stand, and my observations, I think, are pretty clear. Conifers and eucalyptus thrive in the Santa Barbara coastal microclimate. The ecosystem they support, in which they are the dominant species, requires very little maintenance or water. Surviving the worst drought in California history, this is a self-sustaining plant association, which is in every way successful. We should protect this ecosystem because it has proven itself and its suitability to this specific place. The view to the ocean underneath the trees and over the canopies of these 60-year-old trees has the integrity of a natural scene. Such visual character is irreplaceable either by cost or in a lifetime. The venerable woodland we are privileged to enjoy at this, at this place may be considered as indigenous as the lay of the land and as valuable as any other aspect of the views available from our foothills. Eighty percent of the canopy in the, in the setback will be removed. This, this removal is 10 trees, a total of 13 in the setback. There are a couple of trees right up by the gate that won't be removed, and a couple of pines in front of them, near the driveway. And this is, includes the, the three trees or two trees, however you want to count it, on 801. Those are the little zigzags. Those will be removing that canopy. In the front here is where the eucalyptus is, on the right of the screen. That'll all go. Now, this whole thing about weak limbs, the wind blows, it just howls through here, and these trees have withstood it. I don't know if you've, you've, we've had a lot of winds lately, and they've been fine. This request has no defendable basis. My arborist, this might be the confusion about why the arborist report came in late. I was told to submit my totals package together, so I did. And I'm the one that paid for the arborist. I heard that the city arborist was supposed to weigh in, but I haven't seen his report or her report. Now, the Parks and Recreation Commission Chair, Clark states, "I agree," quote, "I agree with STACK recommendations except in regards to Sea Ranch Row. The trees there contribute to the urban forest. Removing them is equivalent to removing, excuse me, a beautiful grove with mature forest canopy. I am unconvinced that adequate findings for removal were met." The arborists concur. As far as disease, that was one of the criteria. They can be treated. The disease can be treated, and it's not a reason for removal. The other one, the fire thing, I refuted by, I was the only one that looked into it. I called the fire department and said, hey, what about this? And he said, no, it's outside the defensible space. We wouldn't oppose it, but we don't, we don't have an opinion one way or another. City authority, none of the findings for removal listed in 15.24.090 have been met. I guess we have a disagreement here. Municipal Code Sections 15.20 and 15.24. One of the purposes of these ordinances is to serve the public welfare by protecting trees from destructive pruning and unwarranted removal. If this isn't unwarranted removal, I don't know what is. Viewshed is not a valid reason, and the two reasons they gave, I refuted in the hearing. I quite frankly was shocked that it passed with only one person dissenting. Here are the benefits of a mature urban canopy. You have low maintenance, water, or cost. The replacement trees would require extensive watering until established, if they survive. And it takes about seven years for them to even start storing carbon at any measurable amount. The trees provide habitat for threatened bird populations, they lower air temperatures, they contribute oxygen, and they absorb CO2. Their roots provide structure to the slope, help to absorb rainfall, and stabilize erosive soils. So removing these trees and their roots and their stumps could destabilize the slopes there. The mature canopy condenses coastal fog, adding to precipitation. It has survived the worst drought in California history. Replacement trees cannot match these benefits. Impacts to carbon sequestration will exceed 18 tons, not including the carbon stored in the soil. This is a rough approximation based on the circumference of the tree and the mass, and it's computed as half the mass of the tree is carbon. For purposes of this hearing, I think this is an adequate estimate. In the first column of carbon stored on the second to the last.
Can you get a little closer to the microphone?
Oh, second to the last column, you see that it's 14.85 tons, almost 15 tons, is currently stored in these trees. The 10 trees or nine trees that we're talking about removing. And furthermore, every year, they store another half ton. For the new trees to, that are replacements, to start storing a half a ton, you'll be waiting seven years. So seven times a half a ton, that's how you get to 18 easily. Here's the carbon storage increases exponentially with tree maturity. Replacement trees will take seven years to store only a half a ton, all of them combined. Actually, there's less trees than the ones that are there, but anyway. This request is a product of unevolved thinking. Does private consensus override public interest? I thought, well, maybe it's just because the homeowners or the landowners and the applicants all agree that these trees have got to go. Well, maybe that is why everybody's deciding this is okay. It is true that the three applicants and the two landowners agree to this tree, tree removal. The city must decide whether that agreement has sufficient and enduring merit to override public interests. Consider the consensus that existed only 40 years ago, 50 years ago, against mandatory seat belts or bans on smoking in public places. We're all better off without that thinking now. Let's talk about applicant's view sheds, because I don't understand why they want to tear these trees down. I really don't. The next slides will show the following. The property at 845 has essentially unobstructed views to the west and the south, 160 degrees. The properties at the corner of Sea Ranch and Camp Anil have southern and western views, only partially obstructed by these trees. In fact, their own trees are bigger obstructions. So ask yourself, will the removal of these trees really change view sheds? How much view shed is enough? Here's 845 South. Looking south, they have an unobstructed view over the roof there at 829. This is applicant Burke's home or property. Looking west, again, another unobstructed view. You can even see the Isla Vista Peninsula going out there, just underneath those trees. Now, at the corner of Camp Anil and Sea Ranch, 857 West, looking west, this is from their driveway, you can see, you can see the beach and stuff, and the trees, I don't know if it's Theo's trees or the neighbors', but those trees, you can see through that, and no one's asking for those to be removed. Whoops. Now, if you look south, yeah, it's obstructed, but it's not the trees we're talking about. There's, you see the palm tree, sort of peep-y, peeking out on the, on the left side. The trees that we're talking about are below that, and that big, huge obstruction is either Theo's, not obstruction, tree, excuse me, that big tree that's there is either Theo's tree or Burke's tree, which is comparable size just beyond. I can't really tell which one it is. Now, 3245, looking southwest, the circle shows the canopy we're talking about removing. That's the obstruction. Now, it's true, I'm standing a little higher elevation, but still. Now, the tree that, it looks like, oh, there's a big obstruction. I thought for a second it was the eucalyptus, but it's not. It's the tree on their property. Here it is. Here's the view to the south. You can see they have, they have trees, and the neighbor to the south has trees. They're beautiful trees. And those are the ones that are blocking the south. Perhaps over, I couldn't, I can't tell on the other side, looking south, because the house is there. But perhaps there is some obstruction there. The tree count is very confusing, continues to be confusing. I just got an email today from Mary, what's her name, Mary Altman, about sequas necessary, but at any rate, she thought it was eight trees, because it's very confusing. It was confusing in the commission. And I was told verbally that the clump of three aleppos at 801 is now counted as one tree, and the pine on the property line is assigned to 801. In my appeal and on Slide 7, I counted three aleppos as two trees. And that means a number of trees to be removed at 829 is seven, not eight. I've listed them here. The carbon storage graph and the table are still unchanged, except for tree labeling. That's the only difference you would have to conclude there. But the carbon storage remains correct. A formal written correction with explanation is, is kind of required, but I did, I found that the map was helpful. I didn't know where to find that. Sorry. But that, that is good. But, I mean, we've said 10 and nine and eight, I don't know. Here's the actual request. I just threw this in here. I thought, well, maybe, there it is, eight trees on this property of 10 totals. So go figure. In conclusion, Santa Barbara attains its status as one of the country's most desirable communities, in large part because it's a man-made structures. Its man-made structures are well situated in characteristic landscapes. Mature, healthy ecosystems are most valuable of all. Trees create a sense of place to all residents. They provide recognizable specifics to our home ground and are appreciated by everyone. It can be seen almost everywhere else in Southern California that citizens sadly have not yet learned how to protect their environment, that the environment that drew them to live there. Let Santa Barbara gain by holding the priorities that they lost. Thank you for your allowing me to have a hearing on this appeal, by the way. And that concludes my, my presentation.
Thank you. You have 6 minutes 22 seconds left, if you, if you want to use it. Are there questions for Ms. Dove at this point? I don't see any lights on Ms. Dove, so thank you for your presentation. And the applicant, as I said, has indicated they would not make a verbal oral presentation. It looks like you're continuing to, okay. So you're referring us to the written materials that you gave us? Very good. We'll go to public comment, then. The gentleman in the blue shirt, you said you might want to The gentleman in the blue shirt, you said you might want to make a comment. You can come and then fill out a slip afterwards and give it to this lady here. What's your name?
Thank you, Mayor Marino. I'm Sam Maphis. And I'm not really a public member in that I am engaged with the Burke family on the property directly above 845. And I'm a landscape architect in town. And I'm here with...
So you're associated with the applicant?
I'm in association with the applicant, correct.
Okay, then I'm just going to go ahead and put 20 minutes on the clock.
Okay.
And is the KFC represents you folks? Okay. So state your name again.
Sam Maphis, M-A-P-H-I-S.
Maphis.
Yes.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, so I want to talk about the group of applicants. They are three adjacent neighbors. And including in the application is one of the property owners of the actual tree work that we're talking about. So there's four neighbors in close proximity to the main center property that has these trees that are in a bad state of maintenance and have been pruned terribly in the past, as Mr., as Tim had mentioned. So one of the, one of the aspects of the group was that these are a problem in that they were planted too close, they were pruned poorly, they're in effect a negative to the neighborhood, and all the neighbors are in compliance with the idea that they wanted to talk to the owner of the property at 829, see if they could help with maintenance. So the idea of these trees in disrepair is what started the applications. And they spoke with the owner and got everyone in agreement that these trees should come down and a better replacement and mitigation would be certainly planted and transplanted in their place. So the removal of these trees would not affect the soil, would not affect the stability of the area, because they would, the roots would not be taken out. The main pines up the driveway would remain. So the grove that's been talked about by the appellant really is going to remain. It's just the trees that are in disrepair, close to the street, that'll actually be removed as part of this approval that we're looking for. So I wanted to just bring that to everyone's attention. And we are here, they are here certainly, to voice opinions and answer questions if there's anything that we can provide as a background. But Mr. Theo, Theo Lopelis was very specific in addressing all of the points of the meeting. And he gave you that report and that letter. And I think much of the questions that came up were addressed in that letter. I'm not here to go through all that again. But we're certainly here for questions. And I don't really need any more time than that.
Okay, I'll stop you. I'll stop you at 70 minutes and 42 seconds, just for the record. Ms. Sneddon has a question for Mr. Maphis.
I do, thank you, Madam Mayor. The main pines that remain, those are closer to the structure, so...
There are some closer to the structure and there are some close and remaining by Sea Ranch Road.
So for defensible space, it just confuses me, because the ones that are actually closer to the space to defend are intact. Could you explain a little bit more of that to me?
The 35-foot setback is just the area that we were talking about, these trees being removed. There's a number of trees that are much closer together and potentially a defensible space issue closer to the house.
And these are not those trees?
And these are not being discussed and/or talked about any removals at this point.
So trees that are closer and closer together and closer to the structure are not considered problematic, but these ones are?
Well, they're not considered part of this application, because they're not on the private property and they're not being discussed about taking them down at this point. These are just the ones in the jurisdiction of the city.
Okay, thank you.
The whole property does need maintenance, and there are many trees on that property. And the neighbors are discussing that with the owner of that property to try to do better maintenance and to open things up for many reasons, views being one. But certainly, defensible space is a worry of the neighborhood, as well as the client and/or owner of the property directly above. So there are some defensible space issues, and we don't, not prepared to talk about that now, because we don't have any good information with the fire department. But that could, that'll be something that's taken up later.
Do I understand, though, that part of this application for the removal of these trees is defensible space?
I think it was proven that it's not close enough to the structure to really be defensible space issue. And so that's not really something that we're saying is adequately representative.
Thank you. And are any of these trees diseased? I know that was in one of the original applications, but then not. So the trees that are actually tagged for removal, are any of them diseased?
You know, I don't know if they're diseased, they're effectively been mismanaged and are poorly pruned. Some of them are planted so close together that they are in a point of failing and declining. But I don't know if they are diseased.
Mr. Downey would know that.
Mayor Marino and Councilmember Sneddon, the Arbor's report does indicate some disease in some of the trees that is treatable. And the trees that he noted are not the ones being considered for removal. There, as I mentioned before, there is significant deadwood in the middle of the trees. And due to their proximity to each other, growing together, they just have been so dense that they don't have a lot of lush foliage down low. So from a layperson's eye, they would appear diseased, because they're not lush. But there are no unmanageable diseases in the trees proposed for removal.
Thank you. And then, and then the deadwood that's in the trees, that's something that is addressable? Is that by pruning or care and treatment?
That's correct. The deadwood can be pruned out.
Thank you.
Excuse me. One of the other things is the trees have been planted so closely, as been mentioned, that the leaves and needles and green biomass is all at the top 10%. And much of the 90% of the tree has got very little growth, if any, green foliage on it. So that's also being planted too close, which is one of the conditions we're discussing.
Thank you. And the replacement trees have been identified as what trees are, or just that they fall within those recommended, that they're noninvasive and reach a certain canopy?
Mayor Marino and Councilmember Sneddon, the applicant has not identified, well, the applicant proposed trees that are on that invasive species list. There has not been any discussion about what the replacement trees would be if they're successful in their, today in their application.
And then, might I ask, do those trees, when they're planted new, require extra
Councilmember Marino, or, excuse me, Mayor Marino and Councilmember Sneddon, the young trees do require water to establish, usually the first three to five years. It is not a significant amount of water. Typically, we water our street trees on a weekly basis for the first year. It's about 20 gallons a week for a 15-gallon tree. I believe the applicants are proposing larger trees than that, but that gives you some perspective of how much water.
And then, one further question. The time of year when trees are removed, these are established, mature trees, is there consideration to if it's springtime and there are nesting birds? Or is there a time of year consideration?
Mayor Marino and Councilmember Sneddon, 1918, if I remember the year correctly, Migratory Bird Treaty Act requires that if there are active nests or roosting in those trees, then any person who wants to work on those trees has to either get a biologist report telling them it's okay to work on the trees, or they have to wait until the period where it's not the bird nesting season. That is between February 15th and August 15th.
Thank you.
Mr. Dominguez, questions for the speaker or in general?
Maybe I will wait. I had questions on the findings, but I'm not sure if I should ask the speaker or staff.
No.
Because if you weren't part of the findings process, then you wouldn't know.
I wasn't.
Okay. I'll hold off.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. So...
Well, now then, I would ask the question now, if we're still in questions mode.
I think, yeah, this is a good time for questions. Go ahead.
So what was the finding? There's apparently these five findings. We just, the staff needed to make one of them to justify the removal?
Mayor Marino and Councilmember Dominguez, the commission did discuss that the character of the neighborhood would not be materially affected with the proposed removal and replacements.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and so, public comment. I don't think we have any speaker slips and either they're applicants or members of the design or the advisory board. So we will go to council deliberations after, oh, Mr. Gutierrez. Good time for questions, but Ms. Dove, you have six minutes if you wanted to give us any closing comments. But you're, you have the floor, Mr. Dominguez, Mr. Gutierrez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Downey and Parks and Rec Department. I have a question about the condition of the soil in that area. I have a understanding that it's pretty loose and tend to slide quite frequently. Can you, you know, confirm that at all?
Mayor Marino and Councilmember Gutierrez, that is not my expertise. I will comment, though, in a way that might help. When the trees are removed, when the stump is ground on a tree, the roots that are in the soil are not removed. It's only the woody portion of the trunk right at the, where the roots veer off of that. So any roots that are in that soil, holding that soil, would remain.
Thank you. That was my only question.
Ms. Dove has more time? Or did you have a question at this point? Mr. Dominguez?
If she doesn't have, doesn't have anything to add, I would make a motion.
Do you have anything to add, ma'am? Come on up, then.
I think erroneously, people have said that it's a crowded canopy and that there's not enough needles and stuff. And they're forgetting that these trees have just undergone a tremendous stress of drought and survived it. And I think a lot of what you're seeing is stress, which with the rain and everything and better care, we can see those trees come back and be beautiful. Thank you.
I will ask, thank you. I'll ask a question before we go. So the owner of the property where Ms. Dove lives, is that owner supportive of the application?
Mayor Marino, yes, he is.
Understood. Mr. Dominguez, you want to go first on our deliberations?
Yes, I would just start by saying, if it does end up that these trees are removed, one alternative to promote carbon sequestration is tree burial. So I would urge the applicant to look into tree burial, because what it does is it stems or slows the decomposition pathway, and it allows other plants in the neighborhood to absorb that carbon dioxide. And I would make a motion that we deny the appeal and use the finding that the character of the neighborhood would not be materially affected, which is the third of the five. And that's the one that Mr. Dewey said was used. So that'd be my motion.
Okay, so, looking at the, there. Okay, so the character of the neighborhood, yeah, there's other, other ones to choose from there. Is there a second to that motion? Well, I'll second it. I believe that the, Ms. Dove, you made a great argument, and you might have convinced some of my colleagues, they didn't jump in to second the motion. So we'll hear what they have to say in their comments. But to me, this is a matter of property rights, and also that the Tree Advisory Committee and the Parks and Recreation Commission, as well as our staff, are agreeing that the removal of the trees are a benefit to the community in general. So I'll be, I'll be voting for my, your motion, our motion. And so Ms. Harmon and then Mr. Friedman, to the motion, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will also be voting in favor of this motion. I agree, I very much appreciate the perspective that you brought, but swayed by the property rights argument, as well as the fact that the Parks and Rec Commission voted in favor of this. So I will be voting in favor of the motion that is now on the table to deny the appeal.
Thanks. Mr. Friedman?
I'll also be supporting the motion. The Parks Commission and the Street Trees Advisory Committee are also known to value our trees significantly. So when they both agree to something like this, having gone through both those processes through their committees, they really take care to cross their t's and dot their i's. Been a long day, I almost said that backwards. We could include finding one, but that's where I was heading on it, but three is fine. So I'll be supporting the motion.
Very good. If there are no other comments, we'll go ahead and take a roll call vote. I don't see any of our lights on.
Madam Mayor and councilmembers, this is a motion by Councilmember Dominguez, seconded by Mayor Marino, to deny the appeal and use the finding that the character of the neighborhood would not be materially affected. Councilmember Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
Councilmember Rouse has left the meeting. Councilmember Sneddon?
No.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Friedman?
Yes.
And Mayor Marino?
Aye. Five to one?
That's, that's five to one with a no from Councilmember Sneddon and Councilmember Rouse absent.
Very good, Ms. Clerk. We'll go ahead and close this item with thanks to the staff, to the appellant, to the applicant. I hope everyone can go forward being good neighbors, as these situations are always difficult, so. So we've been gone for, we last, we missed last Tuesday because of the Memorial Day weekend. So in our committee assignment reports, we have a couple of weeks to cover. And Mr. Gutierrez, you ready to go first over there?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended the Memorial Day service at the Santa Barbara Cemetery and also got to attend the Memorial Day service at San Marcos High School, which built, I believe, the second Vietnam Memorial in our country. And I also got to produce and produce a series of public service announcements for the Teen Youth Council. And it was great to see yesterday Susan Young at her retirement party, getting honored by all the students for all the, almost two decades of work that she did for the community. So we're going to miss her and we're very grateful for everything she did.
I'll go. I don't, okay, Mr. Friedman, go ahead.
Sorry about that, forgot to turn my light on. I went to the Environmental Defense Center, Green and Blue, Environmental Hero Ward and Gala, and congratulations to Abe Powell for the Environmental Hero, for all he's done throughout the years, including the Bruckett Brigade, most recently, but along in distinguished public service. Councilman Sneddon and I went on the Central Coast Water Authority. We did a tour with some of the member agencies and staff of all the facilities, from starting in Bulton up to Vandenberg Village, all the way up to Polonio Pass, just, you know, past San Luis and up by Shandon. It was great to understand the whole system, and it's quite remarkable and a feat of engineering of our state water project, very informational. Attended the Tahiga Resource Recovery Project groundbreaking. Excited that that's taking place, a very environmentally beneficial project that will have many benefits for our recycling and other efforts. Also attended as well the Memorial Day celebration, ceremony at the Santa Barbara Cemetery, thanks to the Wood Claysins Foundation for putting that on every year. And then also, the World Business Academy had a forum on transportation, part of their lecture series that they're putting on.
Very good. Ms. Sneddon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think several of us attended the Spirit of Service Award Program. I'm not sure if we reported on that yet.
That was good.
That was really good. And Renee Irelia and Lorraine Cruz Carpenter, really, really excellent awards of service in our community. I attended Sarah House Benefit, a special CCRB meeting, again, on our comment letter from CCRB to the State Board. And I believe we'll be having a closed session meeting soon to give an update on some water issues related to that. Attended E. Montanari. My son played in jazz band at the festival. Attended the Memorial Day Ceremony, Piraeus Clayson Veterans Foundation's beautiful ceremony. Many of us attended that. I visited Santa Barbara Art Works, where I selected artwork for my office. This is artwork done by adults with muscular dystrophy or different issues that, and the artist's beautiful... art is beautiful, and you can come see it and display in my office. And, and the council members, welcome to select art from there. Tahigus Groundbreaking as well. Attended the County Math Super Bowl. And with Councilmember Friedman, the CCWA tour was really, really something. That was a really fantastic tour of our state water system. And also attended the Green and Blue Ball. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Dominguez?
I attended an event by the Giffords Law Center. Robin Thomas spoke on how to win against gun violence in the U.S., and that was at UCSB. I was a judge at the Hospitality Olympics at the Hilton. They have a special event where they invite a lot of the hotels around town, their employees come in. It's a really fun day. And then the Memorial Day Ceremony at the Veterans Affairs Building on Cabrillo, I was the master of ceremonies.
Thanks. Yesterday, a couple of us were at the Invoca ribbon cutting. That was Councilmember Gutierrez and Sneddon. It's a tech company on State Street where Sonos used to be, where Territory Ahead used to be. The Youth Council End of School Year Dinner was a lot of fun. And all the best to our teen programs coordinator and youth council advisor, Susan Young, as she goes into retirement. It was a great party. The Green and Blue by EDC, congratulations to them and all their work protecting the environment. Kathy Feldman helped women start businesses, and I went to her memorial service, blessings on her. Harding School had a West Side Transportation Workshop, where people came out and talked to us about how to make biking and walking and motoring safer. Also on the West Side, there was an artist's flea market and festival at the hardware store parking lot. Really nice, live music and food, and artists were selling stuff, so a nice event for the West Side. I was at a ribbon cutting for the Film Festival Educational Center, so they'll be showing films there. And it, and you were there too, Councilmember Gutierrez, and you forgot to mention that you're a filmmaker and have participated in the film festival contests and educational programs. The Tahigus shovel turning, I can't get out to the landfill often enough. The Public Works Building staff had me at their safety meeting, and I'm really impressed, Mr. Casey, with how diligent they are, taking care of our buildings, and then also being safe about it. And then the Public Works Department had a barbecue last week, and that was a lot of fun. I was part of the meet the mayor's fundraiser for Planned Parenthood, and so it was Helene Schneider, Sheila Lodge, and Hal Conklin. And unfortunately, Marty Bloom had a, had that cold, so she wasn't there, but we all, it was kind of fun, the history of being mayor. The West Side Boys and Girls Club has a new industrial kitchen. The Spirit of Service Awards is our Looking Good Santa Barbara program, funded by Marborg, and it rewards or acknowledges people who do cleanups and extraordinary recycling programs. And then, tonight is a fundraiser barbecue at the Solstice Workshop. And they told me they're going to do it every Tuesday, because they have to feed everybody there, and then if you go, you'll be able to donate to the solstice. And so that's corner of Ortega and Garden. I'll go ahead and close. We don't have any closed session, but we have a budget hearing tomorrow night at 6:00 P.M. So if you want to talk to us about our budget decisions, Wednesday, the 7th, 6:00 P.M., this meeting is adjourned.